Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I will reconvene into open session, this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on September 16th, 2021 at 7:11 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, members of the public are encouraged to participate by watching the school board meeting online at www.aissd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the administration building. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aissd.net. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or may be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Will Banks in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone would please silence your cellphones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence, and I would just ask for everyone to say a prayer and/or positive thoughts for those within the district that have passed this past week, for those that are suffering, and for everyone within our community. Thank you. Thank you. So, the first item in our agenda this evening is the presentation of our Student Leadership Advisory Board. And this evening, Dr. Jarko? There he is. Will do our presentation. Dr. Jarko?
All right, good evening. Board President Mays, members of the Board, Dr. Kavassos. Tonight, I have the honor of introducing our 2021/22 Student Leadership Advisory Board, also known as SLAB. I also have the honor of working with these outstanding young men and women over the course of the school year. The group of students is made up of our junior class presidents from each of the six traditional high schools, a member from Arlington Collegiate, and also a member from Arlington College and Career High School. The purpose of this group of students is for leaders to represent AISD students' opinions and provide the voice of the students to the Board of Trustees and the AISD community at large. SLAB members assist in building relationships between students, the Board of Trustees, campuses, senior staff, and the superintendent. They are assigned a partner board member, and they meet regularly as a group with the Board of Trustees. SLAB members have no official voting rights regarding the official Board of Trustees or AISD business, but they serve a very important voice and an advisory role. This year, their voice has already been and will continue to be influential in spaces such as our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and also our strategic plan work in Arlington ISD. Their group is led by a student who served as a SLAB member last year and who was elected to serve this year as president by the outgoing SLAB members. The SLAB president for 2021 is Senior Redena Fatul from Sagan High School. The following students are serving on the SLAB for the 2021 school year, and I'd like each of those members to stand and stay standing as I call their name. First off, again, our president from Sagan High School, Redena Fatul. From Arlington Collegiate High School, Osa Narma Egbonoma. From Arlington College and Career, Lila Thomas. From Arlington High School, Jack Kozak. From Lamar High School, Marissa Ramos. From Martin High School, Jordan Brown. From Sam Houston High School, Esine Uwokala. And from Sagan High School, Alexis Chuck Wonari. We also have two other members that will stand here in just a moment. There are 2021 student leadership members who have agreed to continue to engage in our work this school year. There are a total of six last year. They had an unprecedented year, and we're going to engage them as often as possible this year. All six were asked if they would want to continue to engage and benefit from the student experiences, and they all willingly accepted, two of which are here with us tonight. So, from Arlington Collegiate High School, William McPhail. And last but not least, from Bowie High School, Tyler Brown. Give one more collective round of applause for this great, outstanding group of young men and women. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. TJ. And I would like to offer an opportunity, Mr. Hogg, if you would please like to say a word who helps to put this work together and serves with liaison with Dr. TJ. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. And first off, thank you to Dr. Jarko for all the work on this and to our SLAB students, especially our ones that were on it last year. Glad to be able to have the opportunity. Dr. Jarko's idea was, let's bring them back and keep them engaged for this year. We're probably in our ninth year, 10th year of doing SLAB. And just to let these students know, and we've talked about this a little bit, but to everyone else, this was formed as a way as the Board was doing a strategic plan, and we had really strong feedback from students. And it probably helped our Board on one of our major strategic plans more than anything else we've done. The students were asking for rigorous and relevant information from students from all walks of life. And so, from that creation, we created the Student Leadership Advisory Board, and we intentionally chose people that are elected by your colleagues in your school and where they're coming from to be able to represent the Board, because sometimes as Board members, you hear lots of adult opinions, and we need a lot of student opinions. And so, as representatives, as elected officials within your schools to help us, elected officials, we thank you. We look forward to a great year as we tackle a new strategic plan, and we thank Dr. Jarko for all the work and guidance on this. Thank you, President Mays.
And I will say, during our dinner this evening with this wonderful group of students, they are very outspoken. They are, they have quite initiative that is really exciting to hear and to see, and we really are excited for the feedback, information, and opportunities that y'all will have to help us as we work together this year. So, once again, thank you. One more round of applause for our SLAB students. Okay, now, on our agenda, we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the Board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aissd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakersRequest. No later than 3:00 PM the day of the Board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the Board regarding agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have quite a few registered for agenda items and three registered for non-agenda items.
Okay. So, I will read this part, and then we will go into calling names for you to come and speak at the mic. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up. At that time, please end your presentation. So, I have a list of speakers. When I call your name, if you would come up to the microphone, and I will do my best to pronounce names correctly. So, the first name that we have is Thoreen Burkhardt. Is Thoreen here? Okay.
Good evening, members of the Board. How are you doing? Okay. So, we, the parents, demand that the AISD be required to prove the science behind mandated masking. Masks have been shown to create more behavioral problems, more learning disorders, more anxiety and depression. When walking in my neighborhood by Pope Elementary, the children had been taken outside for some sort of drill. The children without masks were smiling and happy. They politely smiled and waved at me as I passed by. The children wearing masks, however, had their heads lowered and did not wave or attempt to make any eye contact. The University of Southern California Schaefer Center for Health Policy published an article in July this year. It said, "The benefits of masks in preventing serious illness or death from COVID-19 among children is infinitely small, and survival rate among children with confirmed cases is approximately 99.99%." COVID-19 is an aerosolized virus pathogen, can escape through gaps in mask. The American Institute of Physics published a study in July on the 21st this year. They found that cloth masks reduced indoor aerosols by only 10% and surgical masks by 12%. The Wall Street Journal published an article on August 8th this year by Doctors Marty Makary and H. Cody Messner. It stated, "Children forced to wear masks sometimes suffer breathing difficulties due to breathing through their mouth." They wrote that chronic and prolonged mouth breathing can alter facial development. Colgate describes a condition called mask mouth as a variety of oral side effects from wearing a mask for an extended time. Masked mouth might include dry mouth, bad breath, tooth decay, and even gum disease.
Thank you.
I just have one other thing to say. Without indisputable scientific proof, mask mandating would be risking serious
Okay, so next we have Cindy Calaluka.
Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Kavassos, members of the Board, everyone in attendance, virtually or in person. I'm here tonight on behalf of all the students, the families, and the teachers and staff of Arlington Independent School District. As I only have a few minutes to speak, and that would not begin to cover the issues that we have, I've already sent an email to you all with great detail. The pandemic has shaken all of our lives and put us into survival mode. No one knows better than you, dealing with so many details that it entails. It has also given us the unique opportunity to reset our systems. We were struggling before the pandemic. Now, we are in crisis. I'm here to ask you to allow us to meet the students where they are and rekindle their love of learning, because fortunate people learn things after a couple of exposures. Average people need around 20 exposures, and strugglers need 50 to 100 exposures. I will be here at every board meeting this year. Pardon me. Every board meeting this year to keep this information fresh and allow you to internalize it and begin to use it. I'm urging you to keep things simple. I wanted to use the acronym KISS, Keep It Simple, but stupid you are not. We're not being silly, and I was worried about being sent to Human Resources if I called you sweetie. So, I'd like to say, "Keep it simple, Superintendent. Keep it simple, School Board, whatever you feel comfortable with." And because you might not all be auditory learners. Oop, I have a visual.
See, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. So, our next speaker is Megan Plumley. Is Megan here?
Hi.
Okay. Do I hear? There we go. Megan, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. You may start speaking. We can hear you.
Okay. I'm Megan Plumley. I'm a senior at Martin High School, and I'm fed up with how the district is handling COVID. I'm just fed up. As a student, it's ridiculous. We just hit 2,000 cases, and we've been in school, what? A month? It's ridiculous. And me and my classmates are becoming empty chairs. A senior that my sister graduated with, Heather Buchanan, she passed away from COVID just recently. And my best friend, she currently has COVID, so she's quarantining. And I probably got it too, but I'm not showing symptoms yet because I'm vaccinated. Your argument against virtual school is that 7 through 12, we can get vaccinated, but you can still get COVID. You can still spread it. There is no foolproof way to prevent COVID. And your argument, another argument you have against virtual school is that it harms academic performance. But the days that we miss from being sick or being worried that we're sick, that's what's harming our academic performance. I'd like to stay home this week because I'm scared that I have COVID, and I'm spreading it to me, my friends, my classmates, even my family. But I can't stay home. I have to go to school. I have to learn, because there is no online options, even though most of my work is already online. It's already on Canvas. I don't do paperwork. So, it'd be easy for virtual school to happen. It's just a matter of Zoom meetings and teachers. I really wish that the district
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Angel, but I do not have a last name. So, is Angel present? Okay. Next, we have Brady Carney.
Hi. My name is Brady Carney. I am a mother of two children who graduated from Arlington High School and the grandmother of a child who is at the elementary Arlington High School or Arlington School. The proposal of mandating an opt-out mask option or anything related to masking at all is something this school board does not have the authority to do. While I appreciate, respect, and admire the time put into these meetings, that is not a decision which I believe that you are authorized to make. As a school board, you are obligated to certain tasks, but within those tasks, you are to make sure that the policies you implement as a local office are consistent with federal and state laws and regulations. As it has happened, or as it has been stated many times before at these meetings, it should be very, very simple. Texas state law does not require masks in school. Therefore, you should not require a mask in school. This is not political. This is simply following in lines with what your duties are. Masking children has already been addressed at this board meeting or board meetings like this several times. It needs to be done permanently. We need to actually put it on the board to do it permanently. It's off the books. Again, I am a grandmother of a child who does not wear a mask. He doesn't wear a mask for the 120 hours that he's not in school. Right? And so, if he's not getting COVID 120 hours outside of school without a mask, is it really? I mean, let's think common sense-wise. I'm a business, and I have been open the entire time, the entire time. We only mask when we had to mask. We dealt with the public every day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Next, we have Kim Worley.
Don't worry, it's not masked. Y'all are all safe. Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. Today, I'm here to object to the purchase of the curriculum that y'all are currently trying to buy through Character Strong. Effective June in 2020, excuse me. In June of 2021, Greg Abbott passed House Bill 3979, which prohibits critical race theory in school, taking effect September 1st. Critical race theory is obviously not allowed in Texas. However, Character Strong, let me just give you a little bit of information about it. It was founded by Houston Kraft and John Norland. And let me just give you a little bit of information about him. The work we are doing as an organization around equity has taught me personally about how climate change disproportionately affects those in low socioeconomic situations. Here's another quote he said, January 6th of 2021. "White supremacy is flying the flag of law and order when you feel unsafe and then trampling it when you don't get your way." Riots are the language of the unheard. Domestic terrorism like today is the language of white supremacy unchecked and agitated by those who might benefit from those actions. To suggest the democratic process currently unfolding is illegitimate is wrong. Don't let misinformed desperate words divide our fragile country. Anti-racist school counseling? What's that? Here's a definition from the curriculum. Gender refers to some traits usually associated with one sex. You can express your gender in a lot of different ways because there are a lot of different ways to be a girl, a boy, both, or neither. Racism, it is a system that historically has given and continues to give privilege to white people.
Thank you.
So, next on the list, we have Leslie Skagmire.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off by saying that AISD promotes data-driven instruction. I'm imploring all of you to look at the data and the number of cases between student and staff of COVID-19. The number of positive cases is rapidly increasing among our student population. The district has amassed over 2,381 cases over a period of 23 instructional days. Of those positive cases, seven were from visitors to the buildings, 283 were staff members, and 2,091 were from students. 2,091 positive cases from students alone. At the high school level, there have been 51 positive staff members and 785 student cases. The junior highs have reported 428 student cases of COVID-19 and 49 cases from staff. Elementary school is my critical point. We've had seven cases brought in by visitors, 149 from staff, and 877 positive COVID-19 cases from children 12 and under. We've let go of the safety precautions that we had in place when we had fewer cases and less of a threat to the kids. The Delta variant was proven to be more contagious and less forgiving to our children, and wearing a mask is an effective way in mitigating the risk of transmitting the virus. With little to no pediatric ICU beds left in most of North Texas, it is past time to put safety measures back in place. I want every student to be able to return to in-person learning in a safe manner, and I truly feel that with proper safety protocols in place such as social distancing, frequent hand washing, and mask-wearing, that we can return safely. Please, take politics out of the equation. Think about your family, my family, and our community. We can do better.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tammy Holt.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Tammy Holt. I am an AISD alumni. I was a former AISD educator, and I am currently an AISD parent. I have to say, it's kind of funny that I'm following her because everything I have to say is in exact opposition. And I just want to tell everybody, turn off the TV. The PCR test has already been proven to be fraudulent. These cases, they're not even going to use the PCR test anymore after December. What are we going to do when the flu hits? Are we going to shut down schools? We're going to put everybody in a mask because the flu's here? I want to thank those of you who continue to vote in favor of parental rights when this continues to be brought up to the Board. The rest of you are on the wrong side of history. You do not get to choose how I take care of my child. You are not medical professionals. You cannot recommend mask-wearing because that is considered a medical device. The masks that you are all wearing, by the way, it's kind of funny to me that several adults in the room walked in without a mask, talked to some people without a mask, but now that cameras are on, you've got to put the masks back on because this is all political theater. I know, it's really funny. I know, it's hilarious. But it's actually not hilarious because children are having to pay the price. Why do children have to be masked to protect adults? Children have a 99.99% recovery rate of COVID. COVID. So, why is it that we're asking babies to protect adults? Why? Why should my child, who's in second grade, who's trying to learn Spanish, have to try to learn Spanish from a teacher behind a mask? You can't even see her face. How is this effective in our dual-language schools? Why is it that we have to stand by and listen to fake science? Turn off the TV. Instead of real science from real scientists that are talking about the damages that masks are doing to children? The emotional damage. What are we doing? We're teaching these kids to be afraid of their bodies, to be afraid of their friends, to be afraid of each other, to walk around with their heads down, afraid to be out in the world.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Steve Milleran.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. You hear me?
All right. Yes, thank you.
You may start.
So, I'm Steve Milleran. I have a 10-year-old at Butler Elementary who is an at-risk student. So, we look at things a little bit differently. From September 7th to September 16th today, in the elementary school specifically, we've gone from 550 cases to 877. Now, elementary school is different because there's no opportunity to get vaccinated when you're in elementary school. There's no virtual spots available for my son right now. And if we were to roll the dice and send him back to school without the mask mandate, there's no ICU beds available. So, right now, Texas is leading with child COVID deaths, 59 child COVID deaths in our state as of August 26. So, I think the school district needs to find a way to do its job to be able to keep our children protected, but yet stay compliant with the state of Texas. So, I offer a different legal view. Look at the Safe Schools Act from 1995. Look at the recent workshops that were done, even under the Trump administration, about keeping kids safe, and you'll find that your obligation to keep children safe is a much higher obligation than complying with the governor's sketchy executive order banning you from being able to keep children safe. So, that's all I have. I'll give my 33 seconds to someone else.
Okay. Next, we have No. No. But thank you for asking. Next, we have Kim Martinez.
Good evening, President Mays, members of the Board, and Dr. Kavassos. Thank you once again for allowing me to speak. You're going to get tired of seeing me and tired of hearing me because I'm going to be here at every single board meeting until something is done. My question for you, why the silence? I have now learned that at least two staff members have passed away from COVID this school year. We have another beloved soccer coach from Sam Houston who is currently intubated. He's been in the hospital since August 29. He has been vaccinated, but he's immunocompromised. Why the silence? We have heard zero. Today, when Ms. Mays said something about saying a prayer for our teachers that have passed away, that's the first I've heard of it, but she wasn't specific that it was COVID. What's up with that? We have always in the past mentioned our teachers that have passed away for various other reasons, other reasons and said, you know, that they were an important part of our community, but nothing on COVID. Interesting. Secondly, we know the COVID cases are rising. And I get it, you're not brave enough to go against the governor's sketchy mandate, as the other gentleman said. I understand that. I get it. I'm not going to ask for a mask mandate. I've, that ship has sailed, apparently. Even though we do know that masks are proven to at least reduce the amount of possibility that you'll get COVID, but whatever. We can do other things. What about those big old thermometers that we bought that just take people's temperatures as they walk in? Do you know how many kids I've sent home this year already that come to school with the fever? Several, in just my little class of 15. And I haven't even been teaching in person for the last two weeks because I got snatched for the virtual option. You know, social distancing. Stop in-person meetings. I understand, Dr. Cavassos, you don't want to tell them what to do, but you need to tell the principals to stop.
Thank you.
They need to be, virtual meetings.
Okay. So next on the list, we have Rebecca Rogers.
Okay, I came prepared because I was going to speak on two different agenda items, but it looks like it's all done at once. Am I clear, is that clear? Like, I just want to verify that.
If it's on the agenda right now, you can speak about them both.
If it's A or C, it's all together?
If it's on the agenda, you can talk about however many you want right now.
And is it two per, or is it just two minutes total?
Two minutes total.
Okay, that's what I need to know. So that's going to kind of change my direction. So you guys know how I feel on the mask and parents' choice. I'm going to set that aside for now. I want to discuss something that's more concerning to me today. AISD has always touted themselves as a district that prides themselves in excellence. I'm here to tell you that your marketing scheme to convince taxpayers, parents, and students that the district is one of excellence is coming to a close. I'm speaking today to object to the $50,000-plus that the district wants to use to approve tonight and spend on Character Strong curriculum that pushes SEL and CRT ideology. It is exhausting that we elected you in good faith, that you would have the moral aptitude to make moral and honorable decisions for our children, but instead you're doing an opposite of what we have elected you to do. The board continues to make decisions and pushes curriculums that is divisive and immoral. SEL leads to CRT that promotes the idea of oppressor versus oppressed. It is apparent that this has been pushed in AISD for some time as Brain Pop and was adopted at least 10 years ago and Edgenuity more recently. Both of these curriculums has its standards associated and rooted in Castle Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning. When researching Character Strong, they also follow Castle's pedagogy standards, which tells me that they are pushing the same garbage as Castle. The CEO for Castle, Karen Neem, has come out and publicly stated, "The value of SEL is to be a weapon to social justice, and Castle is committed to advancing equity in education through SEL. Castle's transformative goals of indoctrination through SEL and believes parents and school officials are too stupid or afraid to object." Later, in a webinar to educators, she states that SEL should be used to favor certain students over others primarily because of their race. This is the type of curriculum that AISD wants to shove down the throats of every student in the district, instead of creating unity and leaders and choosing to, and choosing to divide an indoctrinator's student.
So next, we have Corliss Bunkley. Corliss Bunkley, can you hear me, Corliss?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we can hear you. You may start.
Dr. Cavassos, President Mays, and board, my name is Corliss Bunkley, and I hope to bring a balance of voices tonight. After listening to Ms. Chapa at the last meeting and seeing how our districts are using, other districts are using their dress code to implement masks, I'm not sure why Arlington ISD hasn't taken that move. I've heard a lot about parent choice and freedom, but if we're all honest with ourselves, we know those are political buzzwords. They are being used to make COVID-19 a political issue when this virus doesn't care whether you vote red, blue, or purple. All it needs is a body to thrive in, and it's attacking all types of bodies, yes, even children. I reached out to a board member and asked how much more data was needed to be satisfied that they should vote for a mask mandate. I haven't heard back, and I assume it's because that question gave him or her pause. There shouldn't be a magic number that says, "Let's do everything we can as a district to protect everyone." The cheapest, most effective ways to stop the spread of COVID-19 are masks, social distancing, and hand washing. Having been in public education for 17 years, I can assure you that most children in the age group that can't be vaccinated aren't great at the last two. However, they will do them with positive encouragement and reminders. The thought of any child getting sick because someone's parent made the choice to send their child to school unmasked and sick because they wanted freedom is frustrating. Freedom comes at a price. It requires a collective effort of all parties whose freedom is at stake. Sometimes, it requires us to do things we don't want to because ultimately, it's for the greater good. I urge you to truly consider what can be done to implement more stringent COVID-19 protocols. Some are paying a tremendous cost for the freedom of others not to wear a simple piece of cloth or paper across their face. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Marisol Fritz.
We get two minutes? Yes, ma'am. Okay. Okay, so let me reiterate that cases obtained via a fraudulent PCR test are not considered active infections, they're not considered hospitalizations, and they're certainly not considered deaths. So let's start there. Secondly, since some people don't believe that parents should have a choice to wear masks or not wear masks, I would say that maybe all the parents that want to wear masks, maybe the parents that don't want to wear masks should start saying, "Hey, you know what? These parents should, we don't want anybody wearing masks around our kids. So maybe we should just take the opposite approach." So let me go ahead and get into the main thing of what I want to speak about. The district is getting paid millions of dollars for custodial COVID protocols to be performed by janitors, yet my children are continuously being asked or told to clean the desk with toxic chemicals. I wrote all of y'all the email with all that information and with the pictures. Students are there to learn, they're not there to be treated as paid custodial staff. I have a question. Do y'all have custodial staff at your schools? Or is there a shortage? Because my son's school has been, there's, out of eight restrooms, there's only one available because there's urine all over one of them. They closed all of them up except for one. The same thing's going on at one of the other high schools. I don't know what's going on if there's no custodial staff or what, what's going on, but we need to know those kinds of things. In y'all's policy for COVID-19, it says that y'all are supposed to have custodial staff, this is on the website, everybody, that go in every day and clean the desk, and they do it actually at night with the same disinfectant that has corrosive on there. It says that if it gets in your eyes, that you need to wash your eyes out. I mean, it's very, very toxic, whatever it is. So I want to know what the policy is on who's mixing it, who's being taught how to use it, why are children being, why are children using it? How come they're not wearing gloves? How come they're not wearing PPE? Why are we exposing our children to toxic chemicals? But yet, we're worried about a virus with a 99.9999 to the infinite degree nine.
Thank you.
That's not going to harm them.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Heidi Fritz. Okay. Next, we have Naomi Ogil. Mimi?
Hello, hello. I don't know if you can hear me yet.
Naomi, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, hang on one second. Have I, there we go. Really, you are better than this. I am astonished on how an educated group of leaders who ran on the premise of caring for the education and safety of our children and community have completely ignored the medical profession, Tarrant County COVID data, and the district's own case data by choosing not to enact any type of COVID safety protocols in AISD schools. Tonight, I speak as a parent of a high school students. You have chosen to implement zero safety protocols in our high schools where cases are rising drastically. Really? Our cries are falling on ears that do not hear and hence that do not take action. Just this week, your PR person stated, "We will do and continue as we've done since the beginning of the pandemic, everything we possibly can to put safety number one." Really? I see no evidence of this at our local high school, nothing. How about provide a hybrid model for high school students and other things that I've already suggested? After having expressed concern over unnecessary and crowded indoor assemblies at the high school level, another one was held today at my son's school. The crowded indoor event was held to sell a product. Really? Money is more important than lives? This assembly had nothing to do with educating our kids. Please enact a no indoor super-spreader event policy since you haven't enacted a mask policy. Instead, utilize technology. That's easy. The last time a school had an assembly like this, COVID cases spread among the student population and out into our community. I commend and thank Mr. Chapa, Mr. Will Banks, and Mrs. Mays for supporting enacting safety protocols in our schools. To everyone, please do something and think outside the box. Suggestions have been provided to you, but your lack of inaction is hurting our community, education, and medical health care availability. I would hope that all of us here could agree that some type of preventative safety measures should be enacted. Many suggestions have already been given to you. I appreciate your time. Please, do something now.
Thank you.
Do something now.
Thank you.
We need your help. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Robert Gregory.
Hello, I have twin daughters that go to Martin High School. Talked about this whole, ever since the beginning of all this, the mask mandate, no one ever defined a mask. Okay, I worked a lot of my career in missile development, so yes, I am a rocket scientist. I was exposed to many different chemicals. There is not a mask in this room I would have worn when I was trying to keep any of those chemicals out of my body and out of my lungs. Because these masks do nothing. They're not open. If you want anything, this is even when I wear, when I work on cars, when I paint cars, it's a rubber mask. It seals on your face. But this is not even designed to stop a virus. This will not even filter a virus, but it will stop particles. The masks y'all are wearing don't even stop particles. So I don't, it's just insane that we even have this discussion that, oh, let's wear a mask, when they never defined a mask. Your mask, your mask, your mask. None of those work. They're doing nothing. If you can feel, if air goes out, nothing works. It's not being filtered in any way, shape, or form. So, you know, the parents have the right. If they want their kids to wear masks and they believe the masks work, then put the mask on your child because you believe it works so well. Don't enforce it on other people. I mean, I just, I don't get that. I mean, you're just, you're just... You know, ICUs, you're not wearing masks for the same reason. They're ready to get the water droplets out of you to not spread bacteria into people's bodies. Okay? So, and it's my speaking time. So, anyway, we just need to, this is child abuse. You know, I mean, you got people wearing masks with beards. They do not seal. So you don't complain about the right things. You're not complaining, "Oh, we need to have a valid mask." Just putting a piece of paper in front of your mouth does absolutely nothing to protect your life. So, hey, if you want to live by your false sense of security, go for it, but do not put that on children. Children need to be free, enjoy life, and see facial expressions between other people and learn how to communicate, not learn how to be muzzled and imprisoned. That's all I got.
Okay, next, we have AJ Rogers. No, we're not doing that. AJ?
So I'm just going to kind of piggyback off of what he said about the whole mask thing. What's the difference between wearing a mask in school but not wearing one when you go eat at a restaurant? So I hope that, I don't, I hope I don't run into anybody in a restaurant that has on a mask now without a mask on in a restaurant. Because that's, that's my question. What's the difference? I also want to talk about this SEL that y'all are wanting to implement into the schools. Teachers are paid by taxpayers to teach children how to read, spell, and add. They are not counselors or therapists. You leave that to the parents. In high schools, there are alarming rates of children that are reading on a fourth-grade level. Why is that? Because we're spending more time on race and gender than we are on academics. And that is a huge problem in the public schools, and that is why many parents are pulling their kids out just as quick as anything, and I don't blame them. Social emotional learning, you know, those cute little fancy words that they like to use to try and mask what this is really about? That's only a, kind of like a nice way of saying critical race theory, which is a huge problem, not only in school, but in society itself, the focus on race and gender. Do not approve social emotional learning. You will have a serious problem with parents. I'm letting you know now.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next, we have Angel Santana. Angel Santana? Okay. Next, we have Amelia Schwartz. Sure.
My name's Amelia Schwartz. Masks do not work. I can't breathe in a mask. I cannot smile in a mask. I cannot see people's beautiful smiles. It scares me when people force me to put a mask on my face. Masks make people sick. Only my mom and dad can say what goes on my face. I'm not a slave. God is my only protector.
My next, we have Jolynn Schwartz.
Hi, my name is Jolynn Schwartz. My family moved here in Arlington in 2013. We've been a part of Arlington ISD for more than eight years. Our children have attended Short, Dunn, Jones, Hill, Gunn, and Arlington High School. We were active parents, involved, and plugged in, always looking to support both of our children and the teachers guiding our children. My husband and I both work full-time jobs. And in spite of that demand on our time, we believe that ISD has devolved to a point where our children are no longer safe. We pulled our two younger children out in the beginning of last year after realizing that the board, the teachers, and the administrators were only going to continue acting in a selfish and fearful way. Our children were absolutely not a priority to our school leadership and decisions certainly in not being made in the best interest of our children. We still pay school taxes while we keep our children at home, homeschooling them. And yes, we are still working two full-time jobs. We are not going to allow our children to be scared, psychologically demoralized because of this pandemic. And the fearful leaders in Arlington, masks do not work. So my children have been physically scared, psychologically scared by forced mask-wearing. So many children suffer from respiratory issues. Please stop being weak. Stop making political decisions. Do the right thing. Stop working for special interests. No mask, no vaccine requirements, healthy food choices, no racist CRT teaching. We are not slaves. Please do the right thing. And in the end, God is all we need. He is our ultimate protector.
Next, we have Noah Schwartz.
Hello, my name is Noah Schwartz, and the way the schools have reacted to COVID has really impacted my life. After the lockdown, I lost a lot of good friends. Then the schools tried to open up again, and my parents did not feel comfortable with the rules. I cannot breathe in a mask, and I cannot concentrate in a mask. The masks make me feel anxious. God is my only protector against any illness. Masks do the opposite of protect.
Okay. It is now 8 o'clock. We're going to take a five-minute break. That was the last speaker, and we will return at 8:06. Okay, we will return to our agenda. I will go back. Next, we will be considering our administrative ratification appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for Executive Director of Facility Services.
Do I have a motion to approve the administrative ratification?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? So I've got a motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Mr. Willbanks. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, all present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes.
Thank you, President Mays. And so our new Executive Director of Facility Services is Cory Robinson. Cory attended Texas AMNM University Commerce for Bachelor of Science in Industrial Engineering Technology, and most recently was our Environmental and Safety Coordinator for Arlington ISD, and has also been part of the Texas Department of Transportation Safety as a Safety Coordinator. Congratulations to Cory.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Okay, next on our agenda is our consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval. Yes. Okay, tonight is called Let's Skip. Okay, so next on our agenda item, yes, Louie did it. So next on our agenda item are our action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And we bring forward a consideration for the board for the sale of real property for your consideration.
Do I have a motion? Yes.
Okay, Ms. Mays, I move-
Hold on, there you go.
Ms. Mays, I move to approve the sale of real property locally known as 2901 West Barden Road.
Okay, got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. McMorra, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is discussion action item. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring, as we have been bringing on a regular basis, our COVID-19 School Operations Update. This is an opportunity where we provide an update on operations of our schools related to COVID-19. So Dr. Hill will lead us through this presentation. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. President Mays, board members, good evening. And again, here to just provide a brief update on the school operations for, at this point. So we'll start with an overview, and we'll talk about some vaccines, some testing, and some mitigation efforts. We'll continue with countywide conditions. We'll look at the AISD dashboard through September 15th. We'll look at some of the dashboard trends through, the weekly trends for the dashboard, and then some rapid testing, center data. And then we'll just answer any questions that we may have. So the first one, we'll look at mitigation efforts from the vaccine. Starting tomorrow, we'll have a vaccine clinic for AISD students and staff that is exclusively for AISD. We'll have it at our Food Service Department. It'll be run from 12 noon until 6:00 p.m. tomorrow. They'll be administering the Moderna and the Pfizer, the first and the second doses of those two vaccines. This is a partnership with the Arlington Fire Department, and they graciously accepted this and partnered with us. We also have vaccine opportunities that continue on Monday through Fridays from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Arlington Fire Department at their 2920 South Cooper location. No appointments necessary. It's just a walk-up vaccine clinic at any day. As far as testing, we partnered with Tarrant County to conduct a drive-through test site with the PCR test. It'll be at our athletic complex at 1,000 East, 1,001 East Division Street. That'll run Tuesday through Saturday. We're still working on the times, but we'll have some days where we'll be early morning to early afternoon, and then some days we'll start up a little bit later and then go later into the evening to try to make sure that we cover the gamut for those working families that want to be tested. The results, because it's a PCR test, can take up to 72 hours, and we'll look to start this clinic on the week of September 27. We will continue our AISD clinic, the Rapid Test Clinic, at 604 New York, and that'll continue to be Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then that's by appointment only. We'll report that we are getting up to speed and where we're not as far lagged behind on our, on our Rapid Testing Clinic, again, because of the more testing options that are becoming available within the county. Speaking of that, the next three slides will show you, this is straight from the Tarrant County's website, the space of the locations and the test sites that are available throughout the county, all over the county, north, south, east, and west, to try to make sure we get good coverage. And we believe that this may be the reason that, some of the reasons that we are catching up with our on-site clinic at 604 New York. But again, here are more sites that are throughout the county. And then again, these are in more detail on the Tarrant County Public Health website. Other mitigation factors that we have are efforts that we have in place. And we continue to strongly encourage students to wear, wear the mask, students and staff. We continue to require symptomatic individuals, that's both students and staff, to, to stay home. If you're symptomatic, stay home and get tested, and then we'll deal with the results of those tests through the ways that we have in place. Just a little bit about some of the Tarrant County data. The focus of this slide is just to really emphasize that, again, the community spread, as you can see by the red bar there, is still at a level of high, as reported by the county. This next slide, if you'll look at it, shows some vaccination data. The left is by zip code, that left map, and the right map is by city. And if you look, the darker the blue, the more people are vaccinated within that city or within that zip code. And the heavy dark blue shows that there is at least 50% of the elder, of the eligible people that live in that area are vaccinated. And if you look, I've got a call out in that area that highlights Arlington, and we're right at 52, I think 52% of the eligible people that have received the vaccination. Again, this is reported directly from Tarrant County's public, Tarrant County Public Health's website. AISD data through September 15th. We've had a total of 2,283 positive cases reported. 273 of those are staff members. 2,003 of those are students, and seven of those are visitors that have been reported to the campus. These cases are updated each day. And again, this was from yesterday. I didn't want to try to show that information today, but being too close to the board meeting and getting some inaccurate numbers. But you can get more detail about campus and department location on the AISD dashboard. This slide shows just some trend data from AISD cases for the, each week that we've been in school. And as you can see, you can see the cases for staff in the blue, students in the red, and visitors, which you can barely see because there's, the cases are so low for visitors, or there's, that's in the green there. But as you can see, the increase starting at 197 for students, and it peaks at 672. I will note that on the fourth week there, that's a four-day week because of, we were out for that Monday, two, a couple of weeks ago. And then the fifth week with the 266 for students reporting, that is, again, through Wednesday of this week. And so that's why there's a little bit of discrepancy there. I want to be fully transparent in, in that data. And then as far as the testing that's been conducted at 604 New York, we've administered 754 tests to students and staff since the school year started, and 103 of those have come back positive. It's for about, somewhere around 13% positivity rate of the tests that we've administered. And we'll continue to schedule those appointments as they're necessary and, and meet those needs. We'll partner this one with the testing opportunity that's coming forward with the county effort. So testing seems to be kind of ramping up and being more available for, for those that need it and want it. But at this point, we'll be happy to take any questions or more discussion about the update at this point.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hill. Do we have any trustees with questions and/or comments? Ms. McMorra?
Thank you for the presentation. Quick question. Does every campus offer masks for students who wish to wear one but don't have one upon entry when they get to school?
Yes, ma'am. There's plenty of masks at the campus that are available for them. And if they don't, then we've got a warehouse, and the administration at the campus knows how to request additional masks from the warehouse.
Okay, thank you. Because we, we don't ever want a situation where student arrives to school and he wishes to wear a mask. He just doesn't have access to one. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. Dr. Hill, just some questions, starting first. The last meeting, we discussed that there was a testing backlog. There was a delay in some folks being able to get into our testing locations. Is that still persisting?
Again, I think with the testing opportunities increasing, we, we're not seeing as much of a backlog as we've been seeing. What we're seeing is potentially people that have scheduled a test and are not showing up. And so because we keep that waiting list, if you're scheduled today and don't show up, we would call somebody that could potentially be scheduled later that day, and we're, we're able to fill those slots. And so we think that the testing is trying to catch up at this point.
Okay. Based on our dashboard, roughly 4%, it seems like, if my math's a little rusty, but about 4% of our students have reported a positive COVID diagnosis to us since we've started school a month ago. Do we, and you may not have this offhand, do we know how many students reported positive COVID diagnoses last year?
We know, but I, I don't have that information with me tonight. It's something that we can definitely get.
Okay, do you have a sense of whether or not it was more or less than the number of cases we already have?
I, I would not be confident in giving that answer right now. Definitely something I can get, but I would-
Sure. And I noticed in your presentation tonight, so usually when we have the COVID updates, there's a report on Tarrant County data related to the metrics that we've historically looked at, really since last March, that include case numbers, positivity rate, hospitalizations. These were the, really the five factors that we looked at throughout the year last year. And I, I noticed that they were not really in the presentation tonight. The, the screen grab you got is from the homepage of Tarrant County Public Health, which shows specimens collected and total deaths up to, to a certain point. But do you happen to have any of the charts that show the case number, positivity rate, hospitalization rate? Because I believe they were in your last presentation and didn't see them tonight.
I think I do. And again, that, that Tarrant County site shows about nine different pages of data, and I just periodically grab one or two to just put in here and always refer people back to the county.
Sure. Yeah, that's what we saw, I think, last week or two weeks ago.
Okay, yeah, so this one is one of those nine pages, and it's, it's, it's up to date. And so this one shows a positivity rate of right around 22% for September 16th.
Okay, and is there, do you have the case chart or the, the number of cases chart as well? There it is.
Yes, total cases.
Okay, and that la, that last bar is to date this week, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead and leave that up, because I'm gonna come back to that in a minute. We've heard from several parents over the last few weeks that the virtual, they would like a virtual or hybrid option for their high school students, and we did have a student call in tonight who asked that we consider one. Is that something that we are considering? And if not, what are the, the reasons it's leading us to conclude that it's not feasible?
So, yeah, that, at this point, Mr. Chapa, that's not something we're considering for secondary students. There's some complexity with their coursework and their scheduling. And we learned a lot last year, a lot of lessons last year regarding secondary schools and their coursework and the best environment for them. We are looking for, and I don't want to confuse these two things, but we are looking post-COVID to look at virtual opportunities for students in secondary schools that are non-traditional opportunities. So if a student wants to take a virtual course or two, then we want to make those available to them in the future. Not health-related, though, not related to COVID, but as a learning model. So I'll give you another example. If we want to have a blended environment where some of your time you actually spend virtually, but you still come to school for some of the coursework, the same coursework that you do virtually may be a requirement once a month to come to, to the campus. Those are the opportunities we're exploring, and I think that has a lot of promise. To stand up a secondary virtual option in this environment is, is, is not something we're considering right now.
So another question I had is, I noticed that TEA last week, I think it was early last week maybe, issued some new recommended guidance on COVID protocols that dealt with quarantining. Are we implementing that quarantining guidance, or is that something that would require board approval to do? Or if, is that, if that is something the administration's not recommending, why not?
We received that, somewhat received that guidance, and we're still internalizing and trying to understand specifically what that means to us and how we could potentially implement that.
Do you know when we're gonna have an answer on that? It came out a week and a half ago.
So if, if you're referring to the guidance that can allow a district to require quarantine for close contact, that's not something at this point that we're looking at. To require close contact, non-symptomatic, non-positive, to stay home is not something we're looking at right now. Part of that complication is really, as you try to staff a school and try to staff different departments, not just the school, it becomes very, very difficult, if not impossible, to do that. We learned from last year, not only Arlington, really throughout the state, country, but we'll just talk about our state. We did learn that of all the quarantine, a small percentage actually turn out positive. And I'm not, I'm not minimizing that, that's real. But the return on mass quarantine for close contact is, is not something that's, that yields very much. What we do want, though, is if you're not feeling well, or if you need to be tested, to be tested soon so that we can, you know, mitigate the spread, and you don't come to school sick, or you don't come to school positive. So our efforts tonight, and that's why we're highlighting the things that we did tonight. I know you mentioned the other screens, but we're highlighting vaccination. We're not requiring it. It's a person's choice. But we do know it's a tool. We know it's a tool, and, and it's something that is a lever. Also, testing is a tool. It's a lever. The more we can test, the more we can stop the spread from that aspect. Doesn't solve all the problems. So those are the things we're, we're implementing. But to require a close-contact quarantine is highly disruptive, and we learned a lot last year about how that return is just not, not really there.
So is that something that TEA is saying is available to districts, or is that something that TEA is recommending to districts?
As we understand it, it's just another tool that you could use. Another tool that a district could require.
Yeah.
It was unclear, quite frankly, Mr. Chapa, and thanks for bringing it up. It was unclear prior to that clarification whether a district could even do that.
And of course, that, you know, last year, we had so many different layers of protection. We really don't have the counterfactual where if we had not quarantined close contacts, what that world would have looked like. So I'm not necessarily persuaded that relatively low numbers of quarantined close contacts would not have led to a higher spread of the virus on our campuses, because we just, that's not what we followed last year, and it's not what most other districts followed. Speaking of that TEA guidance, the boards, our board practice has been to, to affirmatively sign off on COVID protocols as we're going along. And this question is for Dr. Cavassos. Is, in the scenario where guidance changes, where the situation continues to deteriorate, perhaps rapidly, would it be helpful from your point of view if we delegated authority for you to adjust COVID protocols as TEA and state guidance changes, instead of us having to wait to have a board meeting? Is that something that would be helpful from your perspective?
So I'll answer it a couple of ways. One is it, there is so much, and we've seen in other situations, there is so much on board-approved protocols that are either challenged or upheld and things like that. And, and why is because it's a board action, right? And so I would, in, in making sure that we have a consistency in the implementation of our protocols, I would rather that the board continue to review and approve protocols, because I don't see that there's a protocol that won't then be thrown into question by TEA, that I would, that you could delegate authority to me. That would be a one-day or a one-week turnaround that we couldn't have a board meeting to actually put it in place. The only one that comes to mind that we've changed is, is that notification. And, and that was timely. And so, no, I don't, I don't necessarily think delegating that right now, only because what I would not want to happen is that I would implement something that's been delegated to me- is that I would implement something that's been delegated to me and then it'd be overturned, not by the board, but by TEA or somebody that says, hey, that had to have gone through the board. And it sometimes seems like they make up those rules as they go along. So I'd rather, you know, the standard has been take it to the board by TEA. And I think that's an appropriate standard.
And that makes sense. I just questioned whether or not, you know, if the quarantining was something that we did think was helpful and would have wanted to implement. It did seem like it would have been appropriate for that to be, because TEA did sign off on that to implement it immediately if we were going to instead of waiting 10 days for another board meeting or I guess we could have had one on a shorter schedule. But the averseness to having emergency board meetings, you know, for one protocol.
Sure. Yeah. And but that's, that would be, the one you're describing is a big protocol because it's very disruptive in our schools with so many people that would potentially be forced to stay home for 10 days. And so I think to your point, I would ask Ms. Mays and work with Ms. Mays to call a board meeting if I was ever in the situation where I thought, hey, we've got to pull that lever because it is complicated and it's disruptive. And it's important for every one of us to have the whole picture. It's not as simple as saying, okay, tomorrow we'll do 10 days of quarantine for everybody that's a close contact. That has many, many ramifications.
Okay. I have two questions that are pretty interrelated. I've noticed from our dashboard that we have a handful of campuses that are either exceeding or approaching the 5%. The number of students on the campus that have had a positive COVID diagnosis since school started approaching 5%. We have a handful getting into the 8% to 10% range. Have we looked at all, I've seen some other districts using a phased sort of green, yellow, red scale where once a campus hits 5% or more cases, then there are additional mitigation efforts put in? Have we looked at anything like that?
We actually have. And I'm not going to point out districts that have done that, but their mitigation efforts are very minor and things that we do already, quite frankly. And so we have the authority and the option to limit staff meetings, for example, that's been brought up before. There isn't really another mitigation effort once you reach that percentage and that percentage will change over time, as you know, based on the cases and recovery. So we don't want to necessarily provide another, you know, kind of complication that suggests something is happening because we're at 5% when in reality it's very small in terms of a change. So just that, that would be our take right now.
And you know, some of the protocols that those districts are using when they get to the red category include things like modifications to lunch procedures that were in place last year. So students aren't quite so closely packed when they eat lunch. I can understand why we wouldn't want to do that on a, you know, on a campus that has a low case count. But we do have some campuses that appear to be clustered outbreaks of COVID or have been experiencing that. So I do think it would make sense if it's something that the administration's open to considering for the campuses where there's sort of a documented issue with the spread, considering something other than plowing ahead as business as usual. It seems like that would be a prudent thing to do. And on that note, there was a discussion last year, and I don't know if this is still in place, so this is my question. At one point, there was some back and forth between the attorney general and the governor and the counties over whether public health authorities had the ability to essentially force districts to close or go into virtual learning. And what came out of that was sort of a non-binding letter from the attorney general that said, public health authorities only had the ability to implement public protocols from their level on a campus-specific, in a campus-specific way if there were campuses that were identified as having an outbreak of the virus. Is that guidance still in place? Does the public health authority still have that authority?
As we understand it, they don't have that authority specifically. They have an authority to to evaluate what's happening at a site. Let's talk about unrelated to COVID for a minute. Health authority has authority to affect us in different ways. If there are certain things that they see that we're out of compliance and things like that. But the notion, and it came up, I think, today in the call as well. The notion of you're going to send students home or you're going to close or you're going to, you know, there aren't very many tools for that. There just aren't. There's no virtual funding for that because all of it rests. And we reinforced that today pretty strongly with TEA because that question keeps coming up. All of it rests on you have to have face-to-face instruction available for anybody who wants it. So even under situations, and last year was different. We could have, you know, you could send groups of students home and classes and all that. But you still today, that's the foundation, is you have to have face-to-face instruction and you have to operate the school. And that's the dilemma with some of the health guidance from last year, that the health authority could help you and say, okay, well, you should close the school. Today, they can't really do that functionally because we would have to still offer face-to-face instruction is the requirement. Dr. Hill, is that how you understood, Dr. Hill?
That is correct.
Okay.
Just to make sure I'm clear on that. So the new position, which is different from last year, is even if we have a campus where we and Tarrant County Public Health have identified is a COVID hotspot, we have to staff that building on a daily basis? We can't send kids home?
You can't close it.
Okay.
Is our understanding, Mr. Chapa, as you know, because we've had many discussions. As you know, these rules and these clarifications, even today, look at when, you know, the commissioner's talking about it today. Is because there's some clarification that needs to happen. So as it stands today, that's our understanding even of whatever 3 o'clock we had that call.
Okay. So is there any, you know, I noticed, and this is, we've been talking about this now for, since before the, since the beginning of August, really. So the, as I understand it, as well as I view it, the COVID protocols that we adopted weeks before school started are essentially the protocols that we're operating under now. And we haven't changed them in response to, other than a more nuanced notification system. We've not made any changes in response to the data that we have in front of us. Is there anything practical that we are considering doing that we think, you think, would actually make a difference in the amount of spread that we're seeing on some of our campuses?
Yes. And that's what the, and it may have gotten lost because we do a normal presentation here. But that is the focus of this presentation. The tools that we have, the biggest tools, the strongest tools we have in our, in our schools and really everywhere is testing availability. Because if you test and you know you have and you're sick, et cetera, you stay home. That, the way it's described by even TEA is keeping the virus out of the school should be a priority first. And I agree with that. Is test, understand where we are, understand where you are as a student, parent, et cetera, staff member. And the second, for those who want it, is the vaccination. That's the other big tool to mitigate the spread. And third, which we said tonight, is to encourage masking in our schools where there's a lot of people and students and students who don't have opportunity to get vaccinated. And not to go off on a tangent, but the first two are the big ones, which is why we're surfacing. And we're diligent and these are not, and I thank you, Mike, Dr. Hill, I didn't thank you ahead of time. But these are not easy things to surface in partnership because we know that testing works. And when we get backlogged, we know what that causes, Mr. Chapa. And to your point of, well, what can we do? Well, that's the lever. So we stand up now, hopefully in a week, we're going to stand up the county testing in our athletics complex that allows mass testing. Because again, you want to keep the virus out of the school as best as possible. And really, if you're not getting testing, you're not, you're not going to be able to determine that. And then vaccine clinics for people who want it, staff that want it. Access to the vaccine, I think, is still an issue. And it's not the only issue, it's not the only barrier, but access is important, which is why we want to bring it to our site and make it available. So I would clarify that and say, you know, what we're doing beyond the protocols are the biggest tools we have, which is mass testing, vaccination, and encouraging masks when you're in our schools, specifically when kids can't get vaccinated.
Well, it still seems like, I mean, the testing is critical and I'm glad that we're increasing capacity on that front. I'm glad the county has been able to do that. I think, I think you can see from the data that they've showed in the last week or two that increasing testing capacity has made a big difference in getting a sense of the situation on the ground with the virus. Because if we had a bottleneck in our testing capacity, our data would certainly at some point be static and that's not helpful either. I do wish that we could, you know, and I'm not prepared to offer any helpful suggestions except to say I wish there were something we could do that is a bit more proactive. Testing is a little reactive and of course, getting the students tested and knowing that they're positive and getting them from spreading it to their classmates is all, I mean, is a very good tool. But it just seems like, in my mind, we were in this situation now where the data is approaching a point where we're almost as bad as we were during the winter surge and during all of last school year, including that time. One reason we were able to keep our campuses open is because we had this multi-layered approach, which I understand the state has tied our hands and we don't have access to a lot of those tools now. But we're getting back to that point. We had all these tools last year. It seems like we have almost none this year. And then when cases were, in retrospect, it seemed like, at the time, it seemed like a big deal. But in retrospect, the summer wave last summer, the situation right now is a lot worse than it was last summer. And we didn't open schools last year, except in August, we opened for, to serve some special education students. And then we had a hybrid, a phased hybrid opening. And so it just seems to me incongruous that we have those two extremes to look at in our experience. And this is much closer to the most serious situation that we saw last year. And yet we have almost none of the tools available to us that we used to mitigate the spread last year and quite successfully. I think it's sort of, and I've said this before, it's such an odd thing to me to see our success in mitigating spread on our campuses last year used as a weapon to say that we shouldn't have protocols in place this year to point at those low numbers when the reason that the numbers last year, I think, were as good as they were, even despite the situation, is because we had a multi-layered approach in place that we just don't have access to now. And so, you know, when I see things like the number of cases in Tarrant County doubling last week from the week before almost, I am worried that we get into a situation where we have some of these clusters all of a sudden reach a point where we are looking at closing a class, closing a grade. And it sounds like that would be almost impossible under state guidelines at this point. And so I guess my question would be, have we been in a situation? Are we, are there any circumstances that you've run into this school year to date where if we had the protocols in place last year, we would have closed a class or a grade level on our campus for a few days?
I don't think that we've gotten to that level at this point or at any point this year.
Yeah. I don't. And I'll tell you transparently why. There's, this is a complicated, you know this, and so you bring up different points. But I guess the simple way to say it is because we're not requiring and mandating quarantine. So last year, when we had to send, had to, because we were requiring close contact, yeah. The whole grade level would go, all the teachers in the certain grade level, therefore no teachers, no students can come to school. We'd have to do those things. We haven't faced that. Now, I'm not saying it's not challenging. It is challenging to cover classrooms. We do pay teachers who cover classrooms and teacher assistants who cover classrooms. We're pretty unique in, as a district doing that. Where we pay individuals to cover classrooms or to combine classrooms. You get more kids, you get paid extra as a teacher. And I think that's important. It is challenging to cover classrooms right now. But the reason I think we haven't gotten to a point, quite frankly, where we had to send the whole grade level or two or half of, you know, K through three and all that is because there's not a requirement to quarantine close contacts. And so you can operate.
So what I hear is that the answer is probably yes, only we can't require close contacts to quarantine. So we are essentially getting by by allowing close contacts to continue to come to the building.
No, what I was suggesting, and maybe I wasn't clear, what I'm suggesting is we had to close because we had quarantine close contacts.
I think we're saying, I think we're saying sort of the same thing.
Well, in other words, when we had to send all the teachers home, we had to, you know, in a certain grade level, then all the kids had to go home, even though maybe some of them were in close contact. That's a reality. And that's, that was the connection. They were dependent on each other.
So something that we've been careful to talk about here, and many of my colleagues have brought this up. It's a concern of our of ours, is student achievement this year. And trying to do what we can to give kids an appropriate, you know, is not only appropriate, but the best education we can under the circumstances, given what happened last year. So what is the magnitude, you've mentioned there are challenges. What is the magnitude of that challenge that you are encountering? Because in my mind, if we have lots of teachers having to do double duty and cover multiple classes, that's directly impacting the education our kids are receiving. And if, if that is a significant challenge, what can we do to, as a board, to help you mitigate that? Because if it's a common occurrence, I do think that's a problem for our kids.
And it's the degree of the problem. It would be much, much different problem if we had to send kids home without instruction or with asynchronous. That would be an achievement problem and we know that. So a teacher covering and assuming more students in their class, still having that certified teacher is the gold standard, if you will. And so while it's not optimal, it is still very effective relative to sending a class or two or a grade level home because we can't staff it. So it's a degree of complication and I guess of a challenge. I'd rather have, I'd rather have none of this, quite frankly, with COVID, okay? But I'd rather have a combined class with a certified teacher than a class being sent home with asynchronous or a packet and saying, we'll see you in 10 days.
Thank you for answering my questions and I appreciate the presentation, Dr. Hill and Dr. Cavassos. I don't mean to cross-examine you.
Oh, it happens every day.
I can't help it sometimes. It's just part of who I am at this point. But I do have, I mean, I have, and I have had, I continue to have lots of concerns about the situation. It is extremely frustrating to me, the extent to which folks who in other scenarios and other years say they believe in local control to have so callously, recklessly affected our ability to deal with that in our communities. The situation that we're seeing here is not what many communities in this state are seeing. There are 1,100 school districts in this state and the governor's approach is probably appropriate in most of them. I don't think it's appropriate here. So, you know, some things that I continue to have issues with. The data that Dr. Hill put up, and Dr. Hill, if you could go back to the last slide, the one right before this. I mean, these, you can see the trends. I mean, I don't know what else to say. You either believe this data or you don't. But if you're somebody who's open-minded to looking at the data, our positivity rate, almost as high as it was in the winter, it started to go back up. That's the top left corner. We have not during the entire pandemic had a sustained positivity rate this high, which means that we're actually under-reporting the cases that are in our community. On the right-hand side, the number of hospital visits that are attributable to COVID cases, this is directly from the hospitals, is still much higher than it was last summer, not quite back to the winter, but sustained. The peak of hospitalizations for COVID cases, almost at the winter peak, much higher than last summer. The cases per 100,000 in the community, well over 500, when the recommended threshold is somewhere around 50. So we're 10 times higher than the recommended threshold, even though we were well under it during the summer. That's where we are. And what we have is an inability to seemingly do much, if anything, about it. I mean, if you were to put up the state health department statistics, they would confirm the same thing. The number of cases continues to increase. The death rate continues to increase, maybe has plateaued. Probable cases are almost on a linear trajectory. Hospital beds, you know, Cook's Children's this week shared that they don't even have enough hospital beds for the general patients because of, they don't have the ability to handle a surge in any sort of cases because they have so many beds being utilized. And I just got a notification when we were on break that Cook's today announced that they're diverting patients to other hospitals because they just can't serve people anymore. You know, if I, if my kid were in serious You know, if I, if my kid were in serious straits, health-wise, I would take my kids to Cook's, and I would listen to what those doctors had to say. But we, as a state and a community, don't be, you know, that seemingly aren't listening to them when they're crying out for help now. TEA has said that the legal situation is so uncertain that TEA is not enforcing the, the strictures that have been put on it purportedly by the state about enforcing mask requirements. Court cases do continue to be mixed. There are many parts of the state tonight where districts are protected by injunctions against the governor's order, and there are areas of the state where it's not. Those districts are not. The legal situation is in flux on an issue that should be, you would expect courts to come out to the same way, reading the same statute that purportedly people say is so clear. We got courts all over the state reading it differently. I've said before that the governor's executive order, in my opinion, as a trustee, and, and frankly, my opinion is, as an attorney, is, is just wrong. The governor cannot declare an emergency pandemic over an 18-month period and then justify that emergency to invoke his powers to override state and local rules and regulations that, in the governor's opinion, inhibit his ability to address the emergency. He's using his executive authority to affirmatively prevent us from addressing the emergency in our communities. And if you care about freedom, I think that that is a huge, huge issue. And even though it is expedient to rely on the executive order at this moment, many of the same folks were against the executive order last year that Governor Abbott issued, when it was issued to help us mitigate spread in our communities, when it affected people in a different way. To me, it's much more risky, from a governmental standpoint, that the governor can continue to declare an emergency, then pretend that the emergency doesn't exist, but use that emergency authority to override local control. That's a problem. And that's the, whatever your position on masks is, that is a much more fundamental assault on freedom, in my view, than whether or not I think kids should wear one of these. And I think that hope, wherever we fall on the spectrum, we take that lesson going forward. I, I could go on. I know I've been asking a lot of questions, I've been saying a lot of things. But I do want to take a moment and, and talk to my colleagues. We have had many discussions about this issue over the last several weeks, really over the last 18 months. Everybody in here is trying to do what they think is best, and, and I think sincerely have, whether I disagree with them or not, sincerely held beliefs. And, and based on the discussions that we have had, it, it, it is clear to me that, that we have a fundamental disagreement, I think, on the board on how to approach this situation. And that's okay. That's what this is about, is we come out here, and sometimes we debate issues, and we take votes, and they fall different ways. And to that end, I am not, tonight, going to re-urge any motions that I've, I've made before, because I think my colleagues respectfully have been clear in their positions. And I, there is no reason for me to go through the exercise of doing that again. Not because I, I think that the, I would lose the vote. I think it would. But I think it's because I, my colleagues have made clear their viewpoints, and I respect those viewpoints. And so, President Mays, I have no motions to make tonight. And thank you, Dr. Cavassos and Dr. Hill, for letting me speak and ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa, for those comments. I do not see any other lights on. I will say, Dr. Hill, thank you very much for giving us this presentation. I do feel that as long as there are still cases rising, as long as there is still this very contagious disease that is undisputably impacting and taking lives and getting people sick, we need to continue to have the conversations on how to make sure that the teachers and the students that are still showing up to school every single day, whether it's in person or whether it's virtual, are as safe as we can make them be. If there's not an appetite for the mask mandate, I will continue to advocate, and I hope my other colleagues will as well, continue to advocate for making sure that everyone is as safe as possible, making sure that our protocols are as strong as they can be. So with that, a couple of questions that I do have is the hand sanitizers that we had all installed around all the schools. Are they still there? And are they continuously?
Yes.
Full of hand sanitizer?
Yes, they are. And we have plenty of, in the warehouse and in the campuses. That's a part of the custodians' daily routine, to check those and fill them in.
Okay. And do teachers still have hand sanitizer provided to them by the district in each of their classrooms?
It is accessible to them, yes.
Okay. Mask sizes. Do we have masks that are the size for children to wear, for the younger, smaller faces that choose to wear a mask?
We do, yes.
We do, okay. Do they have to ask for those, or are those available at every campus?
They're available at every campus.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Cavassos, I believe, on last board meeting, you discussed that at each of the local schools, the principal had the autonomy of determining whether in-person meeting for teachers, if it was going to be, you know, a high volume of teachers needing to meet.
Yes, and, and I'll say it again. So, we sent guidance, actually, Dr. Hill helped produce this guidance, but we sent guidance that indicates, and again, this is, we, we want to be clear, if you can meet the objectives of your meeting virtually, then meet virtually. If for some reason, your objectives cannot be met, and it's better met in person, we don't want to prohibit in-person meetings. And that's, that's a balance between what we're trying to accomplish in education and instructing our students and training our teachers, et cetera, versus, versus a, a strong mandate of everything has to be virtual. We have virtual tools. Many people take advantage of the virtual tools, and I'm, I'm, we've learned a lot. That's one of the pluses with, last year was that we learned about virtual and being able to conduct business, et cetera. But if you have an objective you need to meet, that requires an in-person meeting, and it's better, we want to have that autonomy to do that as well.
Okay, thank you. Would that same autonomy apply for large student gatherings as well?
So, yeah, so they could, campuses could make different decisions on large student gatherings. I, I, I will just, again, these, we can get real technical in this, so I'll try not to. But the, the reporting that we get on positivity is not necessarily coming from the large sites or the large groupings or passing periods. I know we talked about passing periods. Remember, the close contact should be 15 minutes, less than six feet, I think. Dr. Hill, make sure I'm saying that right?
That's correct, yes.
And so, passing periods, the volume is, yeah. And, and we know passing periods also, beginning of the school year was our freshmen also trying to figure out their classes. And so once all that settles down, the volume of passing period begins to settle down also. But we do have situations where we want to have students dismissed a little earlier so that the lunch period traffic is not so heavy. So, yes, they have that autonomy as well. I don't know if you want to describe anything else, Dr. Hill?
And that's some of the autonomies that, that administrators are exercising. Staggered release at lunch is some that I've heard. And again, to Dr. Vasos's point, really, this year, we've had, in some cases, at our high schools, two sets of freshmen, because the current sophomores weren't there for a full year. So, that first couple of weeks was just...
Trying to figure out the building.
Half of your school trying to figure out what's where. And so that caused a lot of congestion and uncertainty. But now, a couple of weeks in, six, four weeks in, that seems to have been resolved.
Okay. And, and I guess also, I was kind of referring to assemblies, not really passing periods and so forth, but those large gatherings for more than 15 minutes stacked on top of each other. Do the campuses still have that local autonomy to make that decision that either, whatever's happening on that campus during that period of time, to make the choice to say, we just don't feel comfortable right now having those large in-house gatherings?
Yeah, so, I'll, I'll give you, short answer is yes, they do. But then there's the reality too, right? So, similar to the staff meeting objectives, you know, you can't meet a pep rally objective and just be clear on virtual, right? So they're, they're gonna have a pep rally, just to be clear. I mean, these are things that, that, activities that are happening. So I don't want to set a, a different expectation up here. I want to make sure we're clear. They are having large groups, settings and things like that, because the activities warrants that. We have games, we have activities, we have gatherings. I don't know if you want to expand on that, Dr. Hill, but let's say we had an orientation, and it could be done virtually. Well, then we want them absolutely do it virtually. But I don't want to leave an impression like they're, they're not having large gatherings because they're having pep rallies and things like that. Do you want to add anything to that?
That's correct. It, it's, it's, we still want to try to provide the opportunity for kids to have school, and that's the balance. And so, when we can do things virtual, principals are taking advantage of it. Certain situations, they are just, you know, carrying on.
Yeah. So my question really is, do they have an option?
So they always have that option.
Okay.
But I, but I want to be clear that they're probably not exercising that very much, because some of those activities are being gathered because that's the way to meet the objective. So, I just want to make sure I'm clear, but yes, they have options.
You are very clear, I appreciate that. Okay. Okay, so, really appreciate the Arlington Fire Department partnering with us. Really appreciate Tarrant County partnering with us as we continue to watch the trend, look at the dashboards. Personally, the way I see it, aren't really just statistics, they're, they're people's lives. So it's not just a number. So I really do appreciate getting support from those organizations to partner with us to, once again, find additional ways to help mitigate, which, as Dr. Cavassos eloquently said, is testing and giving the option for people to be vaccinated. So, for that, I do thank the Arlington Fire Department and Tarrant County, as well as the school district. Yes? Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. Fine questions, and thank you to my colleague comments. And so, Dr. Hill, let me ask a question, and we've all heard this, and we've seen this cra-, you know, as Ms. Mays posed a question about sanitizer, and I started thinking of washing hands. We've heard all this stuff about this TikTok crazy cra- craze, that's what's going on. Let me, I, I do want clarification. Bathrooms are not being closed unless they're vandalized by students, correct?
That's correct. Restrooms are closed when they become a safety hazard, and we get that hazard mitigated as soon as possible, and then we get the restrooms.
And, and listen, we've dealt with, how do I say this politely? Crazy, other crazy social media things that students have done. And, and this is one that I even commend TikTok. I know they just banned, I can't remember what it's called. They just banned this thing that they were posing, because it does create criminal mischief with that. And so, we are, you know, once they're repaired, we're not just closing them for preventative measures, we're closing them because they've been vandalized.
That's correct.
Is correct. And then, are we monitoring them? Or what are we doing to get us through this week long? Because students have to go to the bathroom, and then also, students, we do want to make sure when they are going to the bathroom, they are able to wash their hands.
Yeah, so, I had a conversation with some of, most of our high school principals today about that. And it's continuous monitoring, getting them back online as soon as possible. We've even alerted Crime Stoppers tips at some schools to try to get, you know, figure out...
Right, who's doing it?
So that we can address them appropriately. And then we even had a conversation with our security staff about being more vigilant, more visible throughout the schools and monitoring kids.
And if we did find a student, I, I know it's, I guess it's off TikTok, but there's probably three, 20 other social media things that I'm not familiar with. If we do find those, we could prosecute those, or prosecute, or send them through our discipline program, correct? Okay. Thank you, that's the question I had, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is now we will address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mays. And I posed a question earlier, and I'd just like staff to clarify a little bit on it, but I would like to remove 210916013 and 290916016.
Okay, okay. So, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the removal of 210916013 and 210906016?
Move for, oh, go ahead, David, sorry.
Mr. Will Banks, are you making a motion?
I move for a motion.
A second.
Okay. So you have a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Mr. Hogg. At this time, we will vote to accept the consent agenda minus 210916013 and 210906016. You may vote. Okay, all present vote in the affirmative. Now we will discuss item 210916013 and 210906016. Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, President Mays. And Dr. Cavassos, I sent an email about this, and you gave us a pretty good clarification. And this is items from social emotional learning, character strong, and social emotional learning. And, and is, I just like a little clarification, because I asked the question of, is this CRT curriculum? And, and I think you were very clearly stated in an email back that it's not. And, and the state does require us to teach character traits and personal skills. Like, this is not something that's just optional, it's something that's required. So, you know, and then we heard some comments of some drastic things that could be included with these two items. Are those things included? And, and help me understand what these do. Because as I looked up these two programs, you know, there's some benefits to them. But if there are drastic things, I think those are up for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. And I'll, I'll start answering that question, and if it gets really technical, I'm gonna invite some of my friends up to the podium, but... Yeah, they're looking down. But, but what I would say is that, we'll start with just this, I think it's good for, for public also, of how we even get to selecting material that we use in our classrooms. First and foremost, no, it doesn't include CRT, and we, we don't teach it. That's, we, I said that in the email, and we've said it, I don't know how many times. But the selection of instructional material is actually a pretty involved process, right? Because we are required to have alignment with state requirements and state standards. So, the material you see is, is also been through that one process first, is, is this something that we're required to do by the state? Which, I think, interestingly enough, as people kind of understand more about state requirements, there are many state requirements. Every grade level has essential knowledge and skills that says exactly what must be taught at this grade level, and I see some teachers shaking their head as well. But, but at this grade level and that grade level, how it has to be taught. And so, and by the way, Texas has not met a, a skill set they don't like. So, it's a lot of stuff in there that, that has to be taught, right? At every grade level. So we make sure that it's aligned to that, Mr. Hogg. I think is the first big standard. But specifically to this, we do, we are required to also have education on character traits. And that has been around for a long time. And so a lot of this is aligned to the character traits that we're required to teach by law. Again, there are many requirements, so I don't want to just say, like, everything's character traits, because, but that is one of the components. And so that's the process our staff uses to select this material and recommend this material so that it's in alignment for that, and supports an, an environment that, that, that supports the state standards. We often get questions about the state standards, and who, you know, well, I have this opportunity, Mr. Hogg, thank you for, because this is an important topic. Sometimes people ask me, well, you know, who, who makes these standards? Well, it's, this, this body here, this board, does not make the standards. Those standards are, are by the State Board of Education and the Texas Education Agency. It's a whole different group that determines our biology, or science, or math, or kinder, or reading, all these things. And so those standards are then given to the districts and said, you must teach these standards, right? So I think that's an important clarification as well. So, short answer is, alignment to state standards is something that we look for in material.
And, Dr. Vasos, I know many things have to be approved by the state on approval of learning items.
That's correct.
Are these approved, learning items from the state?
So, so that's, there are some materials, and I can't point to exactly the ones, but there are some materials that are state-approved, and some material that are aligned to, and that, that's our task, is to make sure that it's aligned to the state standards. So, I guess another way to answer, not everything is quote-unquote "state-approved." Textbooks are, so the, the big kind of mainstay of the, of the classroom. But when you talk about supplemental material, such as STAR support, or STAR tutorials, or things like that, you just have to make sure that they're aligned to the state standards. They're not endorsed or approved, if you will. There's, there's some material that, that, that doesn't fall into, into that standard. Textbooks do, by the way.
And, Dr. Vasos, seeing this, if we, as a board, or any, you know, we don't normally review each little detail... And Dr. Vassos saying this, if we as a board or any, you know, we don't normally review each little detail of those. If we wanted to review that or if our parent wanted to review that, would they be able to review and see those things?
Yeah, yeah, and and that's true of 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 a lot of the material that we use and and most of the material. In fact, when we adopt textbooks, this is getting into Mr. Fox's there area. But as we adopt textbooks, because every year there's a cycle of textbook adoptions that happens in our school district, right? And by the way, this this is helpful because we we have parent participation in the textbook adoption and we struggle to get people involved because you can review them, you can take them home, you can talk to the vendors, you can to to finally make a recommendation to which textbook we want to use, teachers are involved in that process, et cetera. Uh, so yes, by all means, we we would, we would welcome participation in those reviews and and we cycle those through, they'll come to the board when those cycles are are appropriate.
And and Dr. Vassos, I'm here, you know, I've heard claims of things that are in there and I haven't seen anything like that that's in there. If those were in there, is there outs in our contract to be able to remove those from?
Yeah, there's always outs in these, in the supplemental material. Um, the easiest out is not use them at some point, right? And so, uh, but yeah, I would ask Barry, and he's shaking his head, if there's ways and and he's at a safe distance, but he's shaking his head, that there are ways to do that, so.
Okay, I I appreciate it. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Okay, I see no other discussion, so is there a motion to accept consent agenda item 210916013 and consent agenda item 210916016? Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second? Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Consent agenda items passed. The next thing on our agenda is discussion item, teacher incentive allotment overview. Dr. Cavassos?
The much anticipated presentation. We weren't able to do it last time, but uh, this time we're going to do the teacher incentive allotment. And I'll just frame it because it is shifting gears completely with some of our topics of tonight. Uh, this is an opportunity that the state of Texas, the DEA and actually House Bill Three has afforded school districts to be able to have what you see up there, which is an incentive allotment for teachers and educators that meet certain standards. And and this opportunity exists already in the state and the district can pursue this opportunity, right? And it is not a short process and it's not an easy process. You'll hear all that by Ms. Johnson here in a minute, but um, but it is an opportunity. And we want to bring this as really just information tonight. It's not a decision point tonight. Um, it is just information. But this topic gets really kind of into a lot of detail that we want to make sure we provide multiple opportunities for the board to to understand the topic and things like that. Um, I'll tell you, it's an it's an opportunity for teachers, but it comes with a lot of different complexities uh, for for educators as well. And the big opportunity is to differentiate pay. In other words, provide more pay for teachers who reach this standard, right? And you'll see some of that. Last thing I'll say, and then I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions. Last thing I'll say is that this whole process, as we get into the details of it, just keep in mind, because we're going to mention it, that this is a stakeholder-driven process. So this is a teacher's involvement that has to be part of this process. So this is just an information and you'll see the progression. Uh, if we go down this road, it would be with a lot of input from teachers and quite frankly, a lot of guidance from educators. We want them to guide this because this ultimately is for them. It's for teachers and their opportunity to differentiate pay. So with that setup, I'm going to then turn it over to somebody you probably haven't met in this podium, but Dolores Johnson, she's our Director of Human Resources, Employee Relations and Development. And and you're wondering, well, why does this fall in her area? Well, she volunteered. I'm kidding, she didn't volunteer, no. She didn't volunteer. She she's like, no way, I didn't volunteer. But uh, but actually it does fall into the HR perspective because it is funding and it is about differentiated pay and things like that. I will tell you, and then I said it was the last thing, but this will be the last thing. This is not owned only by HR. This would be a district effort. Curriculum, teachers, school leadership, et cetera. Dolores happens to be the one presenting tonight, but this is really, it would impact the entire district. So Ms. Johnson, with that, welcome and take us through this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Good evening, President Mays and members of the school board. As Dr. Cavassos mentioned this evening, we're going to go through a high-level overview of the teacher incentive allotment. We're going to discuss the requirements put in place by DEA to create what they call local designation systems. We'll discuss the components of the system and we'll briefly go over potential timelines. The teacher incentive allotment is a key part of House Bill Three dedicated to recruiting, supporting and retaining highly effective teachers in all schools with a particular emphasis on high need schools. Districts that choose to participate are charged with developing local teacher designation systems that measure effectiveness based at a minimum on both teacher observation and student growth data. These systems must be submitted to DEA for approval and undergo data validation process, which is conducted by Texas Tech University. TIA is also available to all teachers through the National Board of Certification. House Bill Three established three designation levels, recognize, exemplary and master. Teachers can earn a designation in two ways. The first is by obtaining a National Board Certification, which may qualify a teacher for a recognized designation. The second is through a school systems-approved local designation system. These designations are valid for five years. Designations can generate allotment funding for the employee schools, employing school system. Each designation starts with a base amount. For recognize, it is 3K. For exemplary, it starts at 6K. And for master, it is 12K. The allotment funding increases depending on a school's social economic need. Only certified teachers are eligible for designation. And a teacher's designation is not tied to a particular grade level, content area or teaching assignment. There's also no limit to the number of teachers that can earn a designation. So why is there a range? The program incentivizes teachers to go where school districts need them the most. So TIA and National Board Certified Teachers. National Board Certification is a rigorous process that takes most candidates two to three years to obtain. There are two ways that the TIA benefits National Board Certified Teachers. First, they can earn that recognized designation and if eligible, it would generate an allotment amount. The second benefit is fee reimbursement. National Board Certification can cost up to $1,900. Districts may now request reimbursement of eligible fees paid for certification for National Board Certified Teachers who certified or renewed after the passage of House Bill Three. Districts may choose to cover some or all National Board candidacy costs. Fees for each candidate are eligible for reimbursement through TIA once they achieve the certification. Districts who do not choose to sponsor a local TIA designation system may still choose to support teachers pursuing National Board Certification, including the reimbursement. Should Arlington ISD decide to pursue TIA, the district would receive a general allotment funding and is required to spend the funds meeting the state statute. The statute states that at least 90% must be used for compensation of teachers employed at the campus where the designated teacher works and up to 10% can be used for costs associated with supporting a local designation system or to support teachers in obtaining designation. So what data are used to determine teacher effectiveness and impact in the designation system? DEA is asking districts who desire to create a local designation system to consider three big questions. Who can earn a designation? Which campuses or teaching assignments would be eligible? And if not all teachers, would that expand in the future? How would the district designate teachers? How do we evaluate teacher observations, student growth measures? And are there other components that could be considered? And the last question, how and when would Arlington ISD compensate teachers? The state is giving a lot of local flexibility when it comes to determining a local designation system. But at a minimum, the designation system must include both a teacher observation component and a student growth component. Teacher observation based on T tests for Arlington ISD, the district's application must show evidence of validity and reliability. And then the student growth measures would be determined by the district. This can include pre and post test, value-added measures, student learning objectives or portfolios. Again, the district's application would have to show evidence of reliability and validity. So this slide just shows you the two big buckets that are required to apply for TIA. But there are other factors that can also be considered. Teacher leadership responsibilities, teacher mentorship responsibilities, family surveys and even contributions to the broader school community. Taking a deeper look at teacher observations and what is required by TIA. This slide just shows the basics. To to measure teachers' effectiveness fairly, we must evaluate the teaching practices accurately. So following the process for applying for TIA, we'll identify areas of strength and opportunities in AISD's teacher observation system. So as indicated on this particular slide, a standard rubric is required in Arlington, that would be T tests. Appraiser certification. When applying for TIA, the district must have a clear plan to train and certify appraisers every three years. This is something that the district does very well. Calibration. When applying to participate in TIA, the district would have to show that they have a clear plan to recertify appraisers to the rubric each and every other year. This is an area of opportunity for the district. The graphic at the bottom of the slide with the green and orange boxes shows a sample calibration calendar. So the bottom line for T tests as it relates to TIA, looking at validity. Does our teacher observation tool accurately measure teacher effectiveness? And then reliability, will a teacher be rated in the same way, no matter who their appraiser is or where they teach? Taking a look at student growth. The graphic here just shows the life cycle of pre and post tests as it relates to reaching full readiness to apply for TIA. DEA is requiring there be a valid and reliable student growth measure included as a part of a teacher's annual effectiveness rating. So student growth can be measured by comparing students' performance on a pre and post test. To reach full readiness to apply to TIA, the district must have a clear rationale explaining why each student growth measure was selected for each eligible teaching assignment. Student learning objectives. Student learning objectives are currently a part of our 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 system. Uh, this slide just shows the gold standard for SLO as it relates to TIA. It also shows what components have been added so the district would be compliant with TIA. What they're requiring is to increase the accuracy of the current and previous SLO district practices. So some key elements of using SLOs as a valid and reliable student growth measure would include, first, planning and creating the SLO and determining the student's preparedness levels. Then monitoring progress by building a body of evidence of student work that demonstrates progress toward mastery of the SLO. And then determining end-of-year skill levels based on that body of evidence that can be compared to the beginning of the preparedness levels in order to determine student growth. This slide shows a comparison of our current SLO system and the SLO TIA framing. And taking a look at where we are and what is required by TIA in regards to SLOs, our current construct would require substantial additional development to meet TIA standard measurements. A possible solution to measuring student growth could be a pilot project rollout. Rolling out TIA in phases. Year one, looking at elementary school campuses, star-tested areas, grades three through six. What was the growth of the students in those classes? And then the next year, it would include junior high in addition to your elementary campuses. Final year three, it would include grades three through 12, depending on when the student was taking the EOC. The data that could be used in this model would be T test evaluation scores for domains two and three, taking a look at how are teachers performing in those domains in correlation to the value-added model, which is going to take into account student growth in the classroom. If these two things are correlated, the district would be more likely to get approval from Texas Tech University. The why. The use of the star in the pilot rollout may level the playing field for teachers. It would not be about the standards, but more about student growth. Implementing the TIA effectively would support teacher growth, retain the most effective teachers and strengthen the current teacher evaluation system. This would also allow Arlington to remain competitive in the current labor market. There are several surveys that will require teacher input and stakeholder input. The first survey is a teacher buy-in survey that will be administered mid to late spring as a part of the application process. This is now a required survey, starting with the school systems who applied for Cohort D. Then survey number two is called a designation process survey. This is recommended by DEA. This would also be administered to teachers and the goal of the survey is to measure the teacher's perception of the fairness of the designation process. Survey number three is an annual TIA evaluation survey. This is also a requirement now if the district decided to apply for TIA. This survey evaluates and the goal is to improve the local designation system. So the teacher buy-in surveys would be sent to all teachers and not just teachers who are involved in the planning process. How would AISD get started? The graphic that you're looking looking at here is a timeline for what the state defines as Cohort E. Step one includes planning. DEA recommends one to two years of planning. This time would be used for developing the local designation system, getting that feedback from the key stakeholders. This time would also be used for identifying the student growth measures, the teacher observation components that would determine which teachers are eligible to be designated. Taking a look at step two. Step two is where AISD would submit the application. This would occur around mid-spring in Cohort E on April 15th of 2022. Step three is what they define as a data capture year. Once Arlington ISD would receive an approval of the application, the district would begin capturing teacher observation and student growth data. Then moving to step four, the data would be submitted to Texas Tech University for validation. And the final steps include approval of the application. Looking at Cohort E, this would occur in February of 2024. The next slide just shows the same exact graphic looking at Cohort F. So it pushes the timeline back, starting with the planning stage, starting in spring of 2022 and then spring going to spring of 2023. The application submission would be April 13th, 2023. The next few slides take a deeper look into what it would look like for Arlington ISD to apply and the steps that are needed. The very first step that Dr. Cavassos mentioned, that's a very important step in the process, is the stakeholder engagement piece. This is an ongoing cycle of learning, sharing information, collecting feedback to revise and improve the designation system. Stakeholders throughout the process are informed, they're involved and they're valued throughout the development and execution. So as he said, it's really important that the district would get this right. A a great stakeholder engagement process would develop a more sustainable designation system. So stakeholders would include our communities, our families, key stakeholders, teachers and even some district supports from some of the leaders who are in the room. This slide shows the application component. It's step two in the process. The application includes short answers, narratives, dropdown menus and there are also opportunities to upload data and documents. Taking a look at step three and four, the data capture year and submission. Taking a look at step three and four, the data capture year and submission. The district would be required to submit teacher observation data and the teacher student growth rubric rating. In return, TEA would communicate back to the district and share whether the data, whether there may be more data needed to be a part of the review process and approval. And then Texas Tech would review and the data provided and verify the validity and reliability of that data. So there's also a timeline for the approval process. This slide gives approval process for cohort E and cohort F. So there are multiple steps that have to take place before Arlington ISD would receive any funds from the state. Participating in aspiring districts. There are currently eighty-two districts statewide that are either in process or have completed the process of having their local designation system approved. In our current system, we actually have three designated teachers. The average stipend amount is five thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars. Allotments are based on assignment and school social demographics. With eighty-two districts currently in process of having an approval, it's expected that we will continue to hire teachers who have a designation on their certification. Some next steps, considerations, and alternatives. The district could choose to pursue TIA designations through cohort ENF or choose only to participate in TIA as a district through support of the teacher national board certification. Or the district could not, could choose not to participate in TIA at all.
That's her last slide.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for that presentation.
Thank you, President Mays.
Do I have any trustees that have questions and or comments? Mrs. Fowler?
President Mays, that was a very, very good uh presentation. Thank you so much. And I apologize if I ask these questions, if they were answered, but I was just writing things down as as I thought of it. So did I understand that all teachers and all schools will be eligible? I know you mentioned something about uh maybe the the title schools that that might be the ones, the ones that need the the best and and brightest teachers, but will all teachers and schools be eligible?
So good eye contact. So um to help in this in this understanding, so I'll start with framing. This whole presentation with a lot of detail is simply, at some point, do we as a district want to designate teachers? And I know that sounds really simple, like, okay, we'll designate the teachers, but you have to have a system that distinguishes performance to designate, so that's where it gets complicated. But to answer your question, it depends how we set up the structure. So if we set up the structure with all, you know, I'm gonna make something up here, as an example, all star tested areas. Well, that doesn't include all the teachers. They don't all have a star tested area, right? You have other electives and things like that. Or you could set up the system, all teachers. But the 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 second question you asked, Ms. Fowler, is an important one, which is where the money grows, it does depend on the the school. So you can be designated as a teacher, get the stipend at a school, but if there's a high poverty school somewhere else and you go there, you're gonna get more money. And that's the way the state has designed it, so that's not part of our design. Uh, but it depends how you set up the system as to which teachers are eligible. If you want to include all teachers, then there has to be all of this method of distinguishing performance with measures and metrics and all that for every teacher. So it just depends how we set up the structure, if we even go down this road.
Well, I think it's a good program, and I would hate to see some teachers left out that only certain ones would be eligible. I don't, I don't think that would be a good system. I think there'd be some jealousy and some some kickback on that, and so I don't, I don't think that's a good idea. I think if we're gonna offer it, we need to offer it to all teachers. And then how how do we know if progress has been made? Are we gonna set standards? I mean, are we gonna use STAR? What are we gonna use?
Yeah, so that's part of the development of this. If we pursue this, we have to determine which metric or which instrument we're gonna use to to measure progress. So just as an example, you could use STAR test and growth. Not STAR test passing or not passing, because that that's not the standard. The standard is, did you make any growth as a student? Or you could use another instrument, another criteria reference instrument or et cetera. So that's part of this, all of this development is we would have to determine, to your point, which test would we use? Or how would we gather this information? And then, just to kind of keep it, keep it in in a summary format, then it has to be then approved. So let's say we select certain measures and instruments and all that, and we think these are great. It still has to go through an approval process before we're able to pay this money out. And that's really important, because it sounds like that's just the bureaucratic step, but it's not. You can set up an entire system, and if it doesn't get approved, uh then you're back to square one. And the reason it wouldn't get approved, not to be pessimistic side, but uh is because it's not rigorous enough. That that's why, and it tells us in the guidance, your system, your measures, your exams, your instruments you're using have to be rigorous in order for them to get approved. So you can't, you can't just say, well, we we selected these and we're gonna, this is how we're gonna designate. So it, that's why it's such a long process, because we have to practice. First, we have to select and gather the data and then practice and then submit it for approval. And then ultimately, if we get approval, then you can start designating teachers and and paying them.
Thank you. And I've never made it a secret, my dislike of STAR. So I don't think we should use that as a measurement. Plus, if we use the STAR, there're gonna be teachers that their areas aren't tested, and they'll be left out of the the process. So I don't think that's a good way to go. I hope we'll figure out a better way to uh measure. Um, and then and I like the idea of starting maybe in in twenty-three or further out. I don't think now is the time. Our students and teachers have so much catching up to do that this would not be the time to start any kind of measurement. I think we need time to get back into the rigmarole of school and kind of catch our students up. And I don't think teachers need this added pressure of wanting to to be a part of this and having to worry about their students catching up. So I don't think that would be a good idea. And then, this may be more of a a question for Darla Moss. How in the world do we budget for something like this?
So I'll answer that one unless Darla wants to come over. It, the state provides the funding.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. Potentially freed us. All right, so I guess my points are just, I don't want to make sure that that all teachers and all schools are eligible for this. I don't think it would be a good idea to pick and choose, and I don't think we need to use STAR as the measurement. Uh, not only because I don't think STAR tells us much, but the teachers that those subjects aren't tested would be left out. And I don't think that would be fair. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mr. Will Banks?
President Mays, and um thank you to my two colleagues. I'm gonna defer to your superpowers uh on this one, as you guys are the experts on this. And um having read through and seen the presentations from TEA on this, it it sounds complicated, but I think the idea is very noble in that we know that um our student performance is highly correlated to the number of economically disadvantaged students. And it's oftentimes hard to put your best teachers where the greatest need is. And I think this is the way that basically comes in and tells the state, hey, this is what we're gonna do, and it can significantly increase a teacher's salary. Just for example, here in Arlington, I was looking at the schedule of the maximum uh allotment and or um that teachers could get. And one of or two of our elementary schools, if you meet the masters, would be thirty thousand dollars. Not quite thirty-two, which is the maximum, but right there. And we've got a lot of high need schools here, where I think this would do a good job of incentivizing our teachers. And instead of performance-based pay, I kind of think of it as more of a stipend for them to go where they're needed most and use their superpowers where it does the most good. Uh, so I am curious. Um, I think it is critical and that teachers are in intricately involved in the input and the guidance and the development of the plan. As one of our educators here stated, uh, I don't think, you know, I'd wanna be as inclusive as possible and using STAR is problematic from that standpoint. I think also the way the cut scores on STAR is, and we just have to look at these last two years to see how unreliable that would be as a measure, as opposed to another national norm reference test that does provide reliable uh um measures from year to year, like like the NWEA map. And also, I think it should be focused on student growth and using a tool that will allow within the same year accurate, consistent reliable data from pre- pre-assessments, beginning of the year assessments, mid-year, so we can measure growth throughout. Not only for this plan, but to be able to give more touchpoints to the teacher who's going for the certification, that they're on target to reach it. So, yes. I think also it's a way for us to be competitive as a district. Um, if we are offering it broadly to our teachers, but it's gotta be a kind of the Goldilocks principle here. We can't can't make it too easy that it's meaningless or would not be um accepted by Texas Tech, although I could, I probably could make some comment about um our colleagues in Lubbock, but I'll I'll refrain. But uh, yeah, if we, if we I definitely could use it to attract teachers where they're needed most here. If they know that, hey, at Arlington, they're gonna pay for my, uh, what is it? The national board certification, which um I didn't realize was nineteen hundred dollars, but then now that becomes reimbursed. So that's the other key thing to realize is, you know, but if we have a teacher with masters and they go to one of our elementary schools where they can make an additional thirty thousand, the state gives us that thirty thousand. Uh, so that's basically net. Now, we can choose, you you know, so for the reimbursement, we can choose to reimburse the teacher completely, uh, or we can use that to cover some of our costs. My preference would be to put as much of that money back in that teacher's pocket as possible. The same with the the allotment um that each teacher gives. We have to give a minimum of ninety percent to the teachers, is that correct? But if we wanted to, we could give a hundred. Also, some districts, I know, um, it's kind of vaguely worded in HB three that it's um ninety percent of it has to go to that campus. But I think everyone knows that it's really meant for those teachers. And and if we went down this path, I would want to make sure that, again, as much of this essentially free money that we're getting from the state goes uh in the pocket of the teachers who deserve it and who've worked hard to get those distinctions and are making um and um making the leap to help out those campuses where we need them the most. So that's all my comments. I think it's definitely something worth pursuing, and yes, include the teachers. The teachers are integral to developing this plan, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Mrs. McMurro.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Johnson. I know we're really early on in the discussion, and this is a lot to take in. As of right now, my early thoughts are, the options that we're presented with, I think that the national board certification, TIA, would be a wonderful opportunity. That's something that teachers can control. That's something that teachers can pursue, and that's something that they can earn a very substantial reward for. Of course, this is how I've always felt, and I, I'll just be completely honest. This is how I always will feel as an educator. Basing incentives on assessment, student assessment, whether it's student performance, student growth, but standardized standardized assessments of any sort. It gives me heartburn. And from what I understand, this is something that if we pursue something outside of the national board certification, we would have to tie it somehow to assessment. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Somehow to student performance, I think is a better way of saying that. And and you could by default, translate some of that to student performance in their in their testing.
Right.
Re- remember that and keep in mind that um that, so back to the stakeholder input, it's required that we get teacher input and all that, so that's that's why it's a long journey. Uh, but but the rigor of distinguishing performance of students and their growth is required as well. So that, to your point, yes, there are other ways, but quite frankly, it has to be student performance.
Absolutely, and you know, we might not even go with STAR for this assessment. It could be any assessment, you know, comprehensive assessment, we look at a pre-test and a post-test. But I just, I I've got to be honest. My early thoughts and questions that I had were, how much more emphasis do we as a district want to place on testing? Beyond what we are already doing? Would I want my own child to attend class with a teacher who is dependent on his growth on assessments to earn their maximum salary allotment? Is that what the teacher would want? What would this mean for our primary grade teachers, special ed, homebound, fine arts, and non-tested teachers? And I know that that's, there's a lot of gray area there, and with that gray area comes a lot of uneasiness in my initial thoughts. And again, we're very early in the discussion, but I can't help but to um come back to those questions. And um I know that as a district and having taught here for twelve years, one of our areas of growth in years past has been consulting staff on decisions that directly affect their job. We've seen that in surveys. And I think that the teacher incentive allotment would be a big one. This is an opportunity for us as a district. And as everyone has stated, and as Dr. C has reiterated, um, I want to hear from teachers on this. We have to listen to our teachers. As you guys mentioned, this needs to be educator guided, and I do not, under any circumstances, want to deviate from that. This is a teacher incentive allotment, and um we need to listen to our teachers. We really do. These are very trying times. We're dealing with unfinished learning. We are really neat, not just wanting, but needing to attract and retain talented, dedicated educators. And to be honest, some of my best years of teaching, I haven't seen quite the student growth that I was expecting. If my students, if I had a cohort of students who came in with a high baseline, they might not have shown the rate of growth um that I, my students have shown other years. And so um even though student growth is, you know, a little bit less controversial than just student performance on a STAR assessment, it's still something that is beyond the teacher's control in many cases. And um those are my initial thoughts. I'm always willing to listen, but again, we need to listen to our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMurro. Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, President Mays. Well said, Ms. McMurro. I fully agree, and I appreciate staff. And Ms. Johnson, you did such a good job presenting, you better be careful. You're gonna get asked to do this a lot more.
Thank you.
I see Mr. Kale back there looking going, she's gonna present a lot right now. No, thank you, thank you. This is not an easy task to to present and look at. And and Ms. McMurro and Dr. Vassos, I think y'all said it right. Like, you know, years ago, we explored, how do you do incentive pay? And it is messy and very difficult to do, right? This is not easy. And and it's almost like, to go off of Ms. Burrow's, I was thinking it, it's almost like, I mean, do I think we should explore this? One hundred percent, one hundred percent. But it's almost like the decision should be coming from the teachers to the board, not the board saying, hey, here's what we're doing for the teachers. Because I do want the teachers to buy in, but but I do think also, if there's anything to supplement, to go with what Ms. Fowler said, and Ms. McMurro, how do we bring others into that? That may be something we have to look at from a longer term. I I do know, you know, you know, Dallas is the only one really somewhat doing this right now. Um, and it's supposedly, they're in good stages, and it's, you hear some positive. We have three that have received it. We have three that have received it, the designation, so there is some need for it, and there can be some good. So I don't think, I would sit there, if you're looking at options, just to jump to it, and then we start looking early on the cohort to get our staff going quickly, and our teacher feedback, and work on that, would be my official thought on that. But I think my colleague said it exactly right, of what are we doing to really let the teachers say, working with our teacher organizations, working with those that aren't in any organizations, any of them that are out there, and also, I think, across broad spectrums, so that those that may not be fully designated under this can see, hey, here's what happens, and then staff may have another way of things we can supplement or other things we can do. But I appreciate this presentation, looking at this and exploring this to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. This is a discussion item, and there's options up there, and I really appreciate the comments my colleagues have made, and they've made some really salient points. And I have my own thoughts as a former teacher, and that guides my thinking a little bit. But I do have a few questions, I think, before I can say which option I like at this point. So, on your slide that says designation system components standards, there's a sort of a teacher observation, student growth, there's boxes underneath them, and there's an important phrase on each one of those that says evidence of validity and reliability. What does that look like? So we've heard Dallas is already doing it, but what things has Texas Tech or anybody else, has anybody determined what is evidence of validity or reliability yet? What are they looking at for that?
So, yes, and the short answer, and it's not to bring up STAR again, but, and it's not the only tool, but, so use any tool you want. There has to be reliability that the performance that is achieved can be attributed back to the instruction. And there are ways to do that. I'm not suggesting they're easy ways, or, but there are ways that systems have implemented that indicator, I would say. So, if you think of baseline, as Ms. McMurro said, where students come into a teacher's classroom, and then you measure frequently, and ultimately measure was their growth and their performance or achievement, then that could be an indicator. It could be as clear-cut as that. STAR has that built into it, the growth.
Allegedly.
Yeah. And others do too. But just to be clear, that there are some growth measures already built into some of these assessments that tell you if there's actual progress being made.
So if it's beyond STAR, do we have any specific examples of what that could be?
So, pre-post curriculum assessment, or just unrelated to STAR, any type of assessment, because it's really not about the instrument. It's an assessment that will give you a view of whether there has been improvement. And not only marginal improvement, but statistically significant improvement. That's probably the easiest way to address that, that it has to. And that's not us saying that. That's where this, and David, or Mr. Will Banks made a reference to Texas Tech, but they're the ones who are contracted to approve your system. So any system we design, and we say, well, we've seen growth between pre-imposed or beginning, middle, and end, and we can attribute that back statistically, back to a performance of instruction, then we would have to present that, and that would have to be approved and validated. That's what those statements mean.
Because I'm torn, right? So, you know, the tough nut to crack with this type of program, whether it was merit pay, which we've been talking about, I think, for 25 years now, or anything built around performance, the hard thing to get to is, there's so many confounding variables, how do we trace what these students did to that teacher, especially when they've had, you know, by the time they get to high school, how many teachers have they had? When they get to junior high and high school, how many teachers a day do they have? And there's just so many things at play, it's hard to draw that out. But at the same time, I was a teacher, I have lots of teachers who are friends, have friends, family who are teachers, and sometimes you just have a, like, you kind of know, right? Like, you kind of know that the teachers who are day in and day out, they've got the good stuff, and they seem to have the magic thing that works for their kids every year, year in and year out, and there are some teachers who, quite frankly, don't. And I mean, that, I'm not, you know, like, spilling any big secrets here, I think everybody agrees with that. So where I'm torn is, is kind of working backwards. If we could develop a system that could reliably and validly trace student performance consistently to what the teacher is doing, and that's consistent from year over year, it's two things. Why wouldn't we want to give that teacher, you know, reward that teacher for doing a great job? I mean, this is how it works in most other industries, and I understand that there's a narrower gap, I think, in teacher performance than maybe we used to tolerate. But if we could crack that nut and we could trace it back, what could we do with it? And beyond just pay, if we could actually do that, we could figure out levers to help instruct the other teachers who otherwise we might think aren't making the grade, frankly, or maybe a bad metaphor, but we could use instruction with them and targeted professional development to bring them up to the other standards, so they would be eligible for this extra money. Because if it's valid and reliable, it's replicable. And then I don't think people would be left out in the long term. So I'm torn, because it seems like this is, this is something that looks like it could be good, but no one's actually, I mean, I don't feel like we've reliably and validly been able to do it before, and in the few instances where it seems like it's working somewhere in the country, it really hasn't been replicable. So that's where I'm torn. So I think if all of those things can be done, I'm all for doing it as soon as we can. But if we can't do that, then, you know, I might have to take a closer look at it. I do agree with Ms. McMurro that the National Board Certification, I think, is probably a good idea regardless of which way we go. And then my last question is on, there's a table that you have that says current AISD, SLO, SLO, TIA, state framing, measuring student growth, student learning objectives. And it looks like from this that we did some sort of assessment or analysis of the way that we do SLO and looking at teachers in our district. From what's written here, it seems like we learned some lessons from that. Do you want to go through maybe what we've learned, that even if we say no to TIA period, what we've learned here that we are going to use going forward?
The only thing, and I'm trying to summarize some of the, because there's some points that you made that I think we could clarify. On the, how do you develop a system that does that? That's the task. And you would control for those other things. Control for, I have six teachers in a day, so how does it come back to me as a teacher? You control for those things. Quite frankly, the more you control for those things, the more narrow it gets. And the more narrow it gets is when you start to feel like, is it really that? Or we're measuring, you know, every little step? That's the challenge. So I'll just reflect on that, that you said. Based on SLOs, the reason they're described that way is, for this purpose, these SLOs are not at the level. It's not the SLOs aren't useful right now and things like that, or we're doing them wrong, or lessons learned and all that. It's if you want to try to tie it to this purpose, we're not there yet. And quite frankly, many districts are not, for this purpose.
Well, it is, the way, and maybe it's just the way it's written. So when I read that our current SLO is, once a teacher uploads an initial skills profile, there aren't any required check-ins, it seems like checking in promotes, over a period of time promotes development, promotes feedback. And so, and maybe I'm misunderstanding what is actually described here, but it seems like whether we do TIA or not, you know, growth check-ins are probably a good thing.
They are, but if, under this frame, it's really important to emphasize under this frame, you'd have to do this. I think what, because we've worked on this presentation for a long time, what we're trying to describe here is that it can't just be your standard SLO. SLOs are pretty common, and if you try to do it the standard, it's not, it's not even going to pass the first test.
Right. Okay, those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Dr. Raj.
Thank you, President Mays. I appreciate my colleagues' comments. I don't disagree with anything, Mr. Chapa, in a different way. I think what you're describing is the secret sauce. How do we figure that out, right? Been a conversation long before any of us got on the board. So I have a couple of questions. To Dr. Kavassos, I remember distinctly you and I having a conversation right after this became a law, and discussing this. And at that time, you said that, yeah, this, it's an interesting idea, but not enough, not enough dollars, not enough anything there to really pursue it. Complex, which this presentation shows a complexity. So what has changed to say, okay, we're at least going to think about it?
Yeah, I think what eventually got clarified was that this designation you carry with you. And so it's way beyond just a district decision, like, just internal in the district, it's really statewide. So if you get designated by Arlington ISD and you go to another district, you're going to take the funding with you. In other words, you're going to get funded differently as a teacher. That's one that made this different. The other, quite frankly, is that it's a designation that lasts for five years. There really is no recertification, which is another interesting twist to this. So for five years, you have this designation, and it is a significant amount of money, and House Bill 3 has funded a large portion of this. Couple of those things made it different. Then the last point, I think, is, it's such a process to get even approval. And keep in mind that, I think, one of the slides, I don't remember which one, it's 25 before, 2025 before you pay out. That's a long process, because it is complex, and it does get to Mr. Chapa's question, and Ms. McMurro, et cetera. That has changed the equation, the fact that teachers can actually carry this around from district to district. I will say, I know you're not asking this, but I think it's important to clarify, this board has been very forward about making salaries competitive for teachers, over and over. And I think we'll be, you know, ranked really high as that data comes out in our teachers' pay. And so, making sure that that's not lost in this. So the good news is that this board is very forward in making sure teachers pay is competitive. So this is just like on top of that. So when we talk about, this would be good because it helps the competitive market, the board's already taken a lot of that action. And quite frankly, the number designated is not everybody. When, I want to make sure we clarify one thing. Everybody eligible doesn't mean everybody's designated, right? So that's two different things, right? So even if we go, every teacher can be eligible, doesn't mean that everybody gets designated because the whole point of this system is to be able to designate. Otherwise, it's not going to get approved if you can't distinguish performance. So those are some of my thoughts.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it. And whether it's you, whoever can answer, so to clarify, these dollar ranges, are they specific to the teacher, or are they specific to the campus? And if there's a distinction? So are the teachers, I know originally it was, well, the teachers, that's allotted for the teacher, you know, let's say it's $6,000 total, that the teacher doesn't get all $6,000, certain portion goes to the campus, not to the teacher's salary. And I don't know if that's way off, if it's all to the teacher.
In essence, there's only one big distinction, and I think you can get into more detail, but it's the 90% and 10%.
Right.
10% can be held back for a variety of purposes, so we won't necessarily go into all that detail, but for administrative and other tasks associated to this, 90% has to go to the teacher, right?
Specific to that teacher.
That is correct. Or, or campus. Go ahead. Right, right.
You said or campus.
Well, it depends what you use that 10% for. So I don't want to get all.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the 90.
The 90 has to go to the teacher.
To the teacher.
Right.
Okay, okay, just making sure.
But the other point, Dr. Raj, that's important, is that a district can choose to make it 100%.
Sure.
Right? And so that's the other part of making this competitive among districts.
Yeah. So, is there, at this point, is there something where this is going to be sunsetted at the state level as far as the funding for this?
That's a great question. That's a great question. We have been down this path in many different, you know, career ladder, you can just go down the list, Dr. Raj, you know all these, but we have been down this path where at some point, the funding stops. And in fact, just not to compare to other districts, but other districts that had this system were running out of money locally to pay for it, which is where the lobby came in to have the state funded so that it can sustain, because it's very expensive. So the state has to provide the funding. Will the state change that perhaps?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's always been the magic hat. And so with that, I mean, I know there's a dollar allotment now, that it's still in its infancy throughout the state, so I don't, I don't see any pressures at the state level getting close to that quote-unquote cap. Is there any limitations at this point for the, a number of teachers that are, could be eligible at any campus, at any district? At this point, it's wide open?
Yes, that is correct. There is no limit to the number of teachers that can earn a designation.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I appreciate all the detail that is in this presentation. It is, it is a lot. I absolutely agree that no matter what, this should be ultimately the teacher saying, yeah, we like this idea, and we like everything about this, this, whatever that is as far as tying to performance. I personally think STAR is easy, low-hanging fruit, and also the most controversial, and not necessarily technically valid to me. So I would encourage the district to look, whether it's Dallas, whoever has a different formula that they're utilizing, what they're doing, assuming it's a successful, start there, is it deemed a success quantitatively or qualitatively, and then look at what they're doing, how they're doing those measures, so that we can then take that back to our teachers here and say, hey, here's, here's some ideas. Because I don't know, STAR seems, yeah, it's kind of logical, but it's also, I think, a good way to make this thing implode, if it's even worth going forward. So I do appreciate everything. I don't have any additional questions. Look forward to seeing how this progresses. I do agree, kicking it out, taking the time, as we've, there's way too many things on the plate right now. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Raj. Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. As a teacher, I like anything that's going to give teachers more money. So I love this idea. The thing that disturbs me a little is I cannot imagine what kind of an instrument we could use to measure that could be used for a math and an English teacher, as well as a choir and an art teacher. And like I said, I don't want anyone left out, but I can't imagine what kind of, what kind of tool we could use that would measure everything.
Yeah, so that's part of developing the system. We would have to have their instrument for choir, their instrument for PE. It wouldn't be the same instrument, no. We'd have to find an instrument or a way to measure what's happening in the electives and other places.
Okay.
So they'd all have to have a different one, maybe an easier way to change.
Yeah, I just don't want anyone left out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a very rich discussion, and I look forward to additional discussions and definitely input from our teachers on how they would like to see this. Ms. Johnson, thank you very much for your presentation. Have a nice evening. Okay, next on our agenda is open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we do. They're on your list.
Okay. So this second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and please end your presentation at that time. On my list, I have Mr. Ryan Holt.
In short, one, mask mandates are nothing, have nothing to do with the public health. Number two, all board members were elected here, not appointed. Number three, the power of the board is derived from the consent of the governed. Number four, consent can be revoked at any time. Number five, self-aggrandizing your academic achievements does not signify moral superiority. Number seven, or, I'm sorry, that was number six. Number, let's go to number five. Involuntary actions are inherently immoral regardless of the authority or its intention. Number seven, using national socialist German Workers' Party phrases like greater good implies that there is an, that any objector is a greater evil. People who believe that those who object should not be sitting on this board, or those that object are inherently evil shouldn't be sitting on this board, nor do I want them as a community leader. Number nine, all public health entities and those in power of them are not infallible. And no, there is no such thing as good faith in tyranny. Just unmitigated immoral authorities spreading like a cancer, promising to heal itself once it's allowed to infect the entire host. That said, the board just passed something because they got an out that the contract doesn't let them or doesn't mandate them to use the materials. That doesn't bother you? That's immoral. Oh, well, it's not going to affect us. It might do it later, but we're not liable for it right now. That's a load of crap, an absolute load of crap. And the numbers you put up on the board, 1.22% of those numbers were death. You said to believe in the data? You're using data that's not even inside your jurisdiction. That's manipulative, period. No and ifs or buts about it. You want to believe the data, then use all of the data, not just the stuff that helps you fear monker. Y'all have a good day.
Next, I have Stefan Paudril.
Today I come with some concerns. Firstly, as of now, virtual schooling is only extended through K through sixth grade. I appreciate this resource for families, but I do think that it should be expanded to all grade levels. I can't help but to worry about students with ADHD or other childhood neurodevelopmental disorders that inhibit their learning. Virtual schooling is not going to be easy for these students, who may or may not have support from home. ADHD, mid elementary and middle school students exhibit some of the worst symptoms and need some extra support. So when developing the formats for virtual classes, please take into consideration ways to support kids with ADHD during remote learning. Secondly, COVID cases are still on the rise and our schools are not being protected. Masks are the biggest tool in slowing the spread, but since that's not the vibe AISD is feeling, please take into consideration some other ways to mitigate the spread, such as staggered periods, as Ms. Fowler stated last meeting. Lastly, when it comes to leadership in the city, AISD has the biggest budget, but it has a reputation of being decades behind. This board and other leadership needs to do more to be more accessible to parents and students and others in this community. Operations need to be made as convenient as possible for constituents and not for members of this board. That applies to things such as the election process, outreach to diverse communities, and speaking and participating in these meetings. Thank you. And I'll email you the things I was talking about, about ADHD students and ways to support them. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is school board reports. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and share a couple of information items this week. So you'll see them here on the, on the screen here in just a minute. But Saturday morning, school volunteers and community volunteers and board members traveled throughout our district to get students to re-enroll and come back to school as part of our annual operation graduation effort. I'd like to thank everyone who participated in that, you see some familiar faces there, that participate in that, to get our students connected back. And it's hard to believe that we've been doing this now for 11 years and had that opportunity to connect with our students. I think as much as everything else, we learn a lot about our community, our students, the needs that they have. So thank you to all the volunteers. Thank you to Tarrant Area Food Bank for providing the resources for us to have a food pickup Wednesday night at the Dan Diaper Career and Technical Center. Because of their support, we're able to provide food that included everything from fresh vegetables to peanut butter for up to 250 families. This is another outreach by Tarrant Area Food Bank that we thank you. And thank you, Kelly, I didn't realize that you were out there, but that's fantastic. Thank you for helping. Wednesday marks our first day of Hispanic Heritage Month. Throughout the school district, we have different events planned, such as Wimbis World Language. Got this month going by having a mariachi band show up, and we've all had experience with mariachi bands. We won't go into that today, but we look forward to highlighting stories of our heritage, Hispanic heritage across the district, and learning more about the music and the roots of that music as an example here at Wimbis. So thank you for their efforts there. This week, we continued our process to our strategic planning sessions, hosting four community summits. At these summits, our community members heard from students about what's important to them. So we talk a lot about listening to our students and getting their feedback, and they did an outstanding job. They were able to interact with groups as we worked towards our new strategic plan. And I'd like to thank everyone for their participation. Thank this board again for the efforts and all the time spent on developing our next strategic plan as we move into this fall semester. Also like to remind everyone, tomorrow night is the Arlington ISD Education Celebration at Six Flags Over Texas. Tickets are still available for anybody who wants to attend or donate to the Arlington ISD school of your choice. Event runs from 6:00 PM to 11:00, and you can find more information on our website. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Willbanks.
Thank you, President Mays, and, sorry about that. But I do want to tag onto what Dr. Cavassos said about our strategic plan. I sat in last night on one of the focus groups, and our students who were participating provided great feedback. I was so proud of our students. They were very articulate, and they knew they were contributing in having very meaningful discussions and dialogue about what it means to be a student and what our priorities should be for them. And I think that's where our focus should be. So thank you to all those who coordinated that and insisted on giving a voice to those students.
Thank you, Mr. Willbanks. I see no other lights. I will just also like to echo that this is the time where we do celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month for the next 30 days. Heritage Month starts, Hispanic Heritage Month starts on the 15th. And so my fact is, why did it start in the 15th versus the beginning of the month? And the reason why that is, is because the anniversaries of the national independence for a number of Latin American countries, which included Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, is, they all recognized that as September 15th. So the date of their independence was celebrated for September 15th, while Mexico's independence was celebrated September 16th, and Chile was celebrated September 18th. Therefore, they tried to get the mix in there to celebrate all of Hispanic Heritage Month. So my quote is, "Persevation. Persevation of one's own culture does not require contempt or disrespect for other cultures." So I look forward to participating in some of these celebrations throughout our schools. Okay, next on our agenda is Ms. Secretary. Do we have any items to consider?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay. It is 10:24, and we will now move to a closed meeting pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda.